I have no idea what you said.
See, that's kind of...
I know that you don't do that because of the question. So don't...
We will be starting the meeting in just about a minute.
I now call to order the Planning Commission meeting of April 16, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the statement of values.
Thank you. As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and the will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all, but to seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interests of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so that we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all. Thank you.
Okay, please be seated. Since everyone's here, we do not need to go through any steps to excuse absent members. So can we please read the Declaration of Commission Procedures?
We do need to do roll call.
I guess we should.
Commissioner Bottinger?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Biagini? Commissioner Cherakuru?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wang?
Here.
Commissioner Boza?
Darson.
Chair Salim?
Here.
Commissioner Kretschlow?
Here.
Thank you.
Declaration.
Now we can do the Declaration.
Declaration of Commission Procedures. Public hearings are conducted by the chair in accordance with the following procedures. The chair of the commission directs all activity during the hearings. All comments shall be addressed to the commission. Any item on this agenda may be continued to a subsequent hearing. Applicants will be allotted up to 10 minutes to present and justify proposals. Following staff presentation of the item, other speakers will be given up to two minutes. The applicant is allotted up to five minutes for rebuttal of comments. No additional comments will be accepted upon close of public hearing, although the commission reserves the right to direct questions to any speaker on the matter. Special procedure time limits may be applied to any items as prescribed by the chair. Appeal of commission actions must be filed in writing within seven calendar days. Chair.
Okay. Copies of the current agenda and staff reports for each of the items on the agenda are available from the Planning Division office on the Friday afternoon preceding the meeting and available online. So let's move on to continuances and exceptions. Members of the public or interested parties are able to request an item be continued without hearing or withdrawn or taken out of order. Are there any requests from applicants?
No.
For the public?
No.
Or the commission?
No.
Not seeing any, then we can proceed. Planning Commission has seven members. Whenever the full commission is not present, I, this doesn't really apply. We're all here today. Consent calendar items. There are two items on the consent calendar today. Secretary Kretschlow, will you please read the procedure?
Procedure for the consent calendar is as follows. Consent calendar items may be enacted, approved, or adopted by one motion unless requested to be removed by anyone for discussion or explanation. If any member of the Planning Commission staff, the applicant, or a member of the public wishes to comment on a consent calendar item or would like the item to be heard on the regular agenda, make this request now. Items listed on the consent calendar with associated file numbers constitute public hearing. And we have two items. Planning Commission meeting minutes, March 19, 2025, and action to adopt resolutions to approve a conditional use permit in variance to allow expansion of an existing service station by removing a portion of the fuel canopy and two fuel dispensers by adding a 1,605 square foot convenience store and self-service car wash within the rear setback of the store at 2455 Lawrence Expressway. Chair.
Okay. Sandra, is there any step or special handling we need to do for the gas station at this point since the language was inserted?
There is no action you need to do other than adopt the resolution unless you have changes requested to it. The staff attempted to memorialize your conversation in the findings that they drafted. If you think they're adequate, you can simply approve the consent calendar. If you'd like to tinker, then you'll need to pull the item and we can dive into it further. After the item's complete, I'll make an announcement about the appeal rights.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar for the action to resolution on the permit variance to allow the expansion of an existing service station by removing a portion of the fuel canopy and two fuel dispensers and by adding a 1,605 square feet convenience store and self-service car wash within the rear setback for the store at 2455 Lawrence Expressway.
And the meeting minutes? Thank you.
Well, you should say that.
And 1A Planning Commission meeting minutes?
So would you...
Meeting minutes.
Would you amend your motion?
I amend the motion for the meeting minutes.
Second.
I'm sorry, what did you amend?
We amended the motion to include the meeting minutes, so basically the entire consent calendar.
1A and 1B. 1A and 1B, thank you.
Thank you.
And who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kretschlow, thank you.
So I assume we're going to get electronic voting today?
You are, please cast your vote, thank you.
Yeah, there it is.
All right.
Very good, thank you, and the motion passed, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, item 1B, the 2455 Lawrence Expressway item, is the final action by this Planning Commission on the item. It's a decision in favor. Today begins the seven-day appeal period to appeal this decision to the City Council for anyone who's disappointed with the decision.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to briefly address the commission on any item not on the agenda for public presentations?
We do not have any hands online and no one in the council chambers.
All right, thank you. So we could move on to actual public hearing? Warp speed apparently today. I know Jinx did, I'm sorry. So I believe we can start with item number two, which is a public hearing action on a conditional use permit to construct a single-sided digital LED billboard as part of the billboard relocation agreement and a minor modification to reduce the required 1,500 lineal feet distance from the, oh, from another electronic digital display message sign and recommendation to the City Council to approve adoption of the billboard relocation agreement located at 1700 Duane Avenue. So I assume the staff has a presentation.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
This is Meha Patel, and I will be giving the presentation for the project at 1,700 Duane Avenue. The request is for a conditional use permit for a new electronic digital display message sign, a minor modification to reduce the required 1,500 linear feet distance from another electronic digital display message sign by up to 25% and recommendation to the City Council to approve the adoption of the billboard relocation agreement. The existing site is .66 acres and has the general plan designation of low-intensity office, research and development, and L O R D zoning. The surrounding use to the north is US 101, and to the south, east, and west, the existing uses are also L O R D. This is the proposed site plan. The billboard is located within an existing paved area near the northern boundary of the subject property. The site has an existing business, Office for Cocoa Home. There is an existing on-premise sign with two faces, advertising the Cocoa Home business located on the site, which will remain in place. The proposed sign is a single-sided, west-facing LED digital billboard visible to vehicles traveling southbound on US Highway 101. The proposed billboard area is 672 square feet and 60 foot in overall height. The billboard face will be mounted on a new 46-foot-tall supporting column. The proposed sign will cycle through static images every eight seconds without video, motion, noise, and audio. The brightness levels are consistent with the city code at maximum 5,000 nits during daytime and 300 nits during nighttime. The project also proposes a dimmer control to adjust the brightness to ambient conditions. Uses for the signs will include off-site advertisements, promoting community events, public awareness campaigns, and broadcasting emergency messages when necessary. This is the proposed rendering of the billboard as seen from southbound US Highway 101. A conditional use permit is required per city code section 18.42.140C. The proposed electronic digital display message sign meets the development standards in section 18.42.140F. Note that the height is set by the conditional use permit as authorized by the code and is proposed to be at 60 feet, which is an appropriate height for a sign adjoining a freeway. And a minor modification is requested to reduce the separation requirement from another electronic digital display sign to 1,125 feet, where 1,500 linear feet is required by the code. Granting the minor modification will result in development that is consistent with the City Council policy to reduce the billboard faces in Santa Clara. Although the minor modification requests are typically decided by the director, they can be referred to the Planning Commission for consideration and final decision, which is why the request is combined with the conditional use permit request. The proposed sign is also compliant with all the applicable operational standards in subsection G and federal and state laws. Here, the, you can see the proposed billboard is approximately 1,187 feet from an existing on-premise LED sign located at 3250 J Street and approximately 1,440 feet from an existing clear-channel outdoor-operated LED billboard sign located at 1130 Duane Avenue. The city has a policy, has had a policy since 1978 with ordinance 1365 to limit the number of billboards to improve the quality of life for citizens. The city determined that billboards, by their very nature, constitute visual clutter and blight to the appearance of the city. The city's general policy is to reduce the overall number of billboards by encouraging removal of existing billboards, and a billboard relocation agreement is the instrument that allows citing a new billboard in exchange for the removal of existing billboards in the city. Section 18.42.090C of the code says the city can enter into an agreement to allow for the relocation of existing outdoor advertising displays at a 3:1 ratio, so three signs removed, one new billboard. With the removal of three billboard faces, installation of the proposed billboard does not increase the total number of billboards from 17. The billboard relocation agreement for the proposed project includes the removal of three billboard facings. One of those billboard faces proposed to be removed is located at 2983 El Camino Real. Two billboard faces proposed to be removed are located at 3362 El Camino Real, and the applicant will use hand tools and small crane rigs to remove the billboard faces and the structure. The top of the billboards would first be disassembled and removed, and then any supporting equipment will be removed after. On April 14, Planning Division did receive comments from the San Jose Airport Planning and Development Department to inform the applicant that they're required to file a FAA Form 7461 for a notice of proposed construction or alteration to coordinate any construction crane activity with the airport, planning and development, and receive a FAA determinations of no hazard issuance prior to a building permit issuance. These comments have been forwarded to the applicant and will be added as conditions of approval for the project. The project is found to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15303, class 3, so new construction or conversion of small structures, and that the proposed use consists of a construction of a new small structure. Staff recommends that Planning Commission determines the project to be categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15303, adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of a new single-sided digital LED billboard, adopt a resolution approving a minor modification to reduce the required 1,500 linear feet distance from another electronic digital display message sign, and recommend to the City Council approval of the billboard relocation agreement. Thank you.
Any initial questions? Go ahead.
Did you mention billboard also the removal of Laurelwood across the way? Was that part of there for the 3:1 ratio? Or just the two on El Camino? Maybe I missed?
Yeah, both are on El Camino.
And that the one on Laurelwood?
No, not on Laurelwood.
That's one right across the street from them. So they're just going to remove two?
They're removing three faces, which is what our policy is for. They're removing one billboard face, and there's only existing one billboard face on 2983 El Camino Real. So when they remove the face, they'll remove the entire structure. And then there are two faces on 3362 El Camino Real. So when they remove both of those faces, the structure will also be removed.
Yeah, so basically it's just two, but they're double-faced. Okay.
Yeah.
Got you, but neither of those are electronic. They're all the old-style billboards.
Correct.
So we're going to get, they're going to get, take two out, and then they're going to get eight instead?
Um...
Yeah. Because the LED changes, so you're actually getting eight.
Through the chair.
There's a, there's a new math happening up here. Go ahead.
Is the size the same? Like, I'm trying to visualize the 48 feet to 60 height. Is that the same height? Like, from a visual perspective, is that the same?
I am not sure what the height of the existing billboards are. They are along El Camino.
I know this sign. It's nowhere what I, Highway 101 is. I know where this is, so it's right behind me. So, no, from a context standpoint, this is, El Camino Real is a 35 speed limit. 101 is the highest speed limit. But I just wanted to see the massiveness. 48 feet width seemed significantly wider in my mind compared to the Cocoa sign, which I don't even know if anybody reads Cocoa after that LED that just looms large on it. It's on the same side, so they're a problem. But I wanted to get the same reference. Are we looking at the same dimension that is similar to the one on El Camino?
No, this, I think this would be taller. But I'm not sure the dimension of the actual billboard face of El Camino.
Can we have the applicant respond, or, because they're removing?
When we get to their presentation?
Yeah, when, when. But I just wanted to ask.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm assuming from all structural standpoint that the staff have validated its full perspective? This is 101?
Yes, correct.
That's El Camino Real.
Yeah. Building permits are required.
Okay, I'm assuming, yes. Thank you so much, but I want to make sure from a...
Correct.
From our, channeling our Chair Salim?
Yes.
Hold my question.
Yes, thank you.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So staff, what, um, what safety studies have you looked at in regards to LED versus static signs? Especially anything that may have come from the Federal Highway Administration?
So our, our code is, is consistent with what the federal government requires, so those are the standards that, that we adopted. So we don't have any additional standards other than, other than those. So the dim, the dimming of, of the LEDs are the, you know, the safety standards that, so they're not so bright based on the lighting, but those would be the...
Duration of each image?
Yeah, the duration, the eight seconds of the, the image rotation.
Okay, so you actually looked and see what the studies were that came out, not just what the regulations said?
Those, no, just what the regulations are.
So are you familiar with what happened in Texas?
I am not, no.
They had an LED sign where they put up the number of fatalities that were going on, and it wound up that actually it increased fatalities and accidents on the highway. And what's recommended by the Federal Highway Administration in 2021 is that the only proper use of these would be to warn people of risks that are on the road, otherwise not have them on. So I would, but nothing like that was, okay.
No.
I appreciate that, but I, okay, thank you.
Correct.
I'm saying it's right there, right? That you can see it, right? On the, from the highway, no? Am I missing it?
It's visible, it's extremely visible.
This is, if you're driving south, you'll be looking at this, so the sign, the LEDs will be facing north. Well, west. Technic, yeah, yeah.
This is what confused me, because you're saying it's facing west, but it's south 101, but I...
If you're, yeah, if you're staying with a compass, it'll be facing west, correct?
Yeah, that's my question. Because also if, if it was facing the other way around, planes landing...
Yeah, yeah.
When they land from...
It won't be facing plane.
When they land from the south on 1-2, they'll be right on their faces, so that's, it's facing the other way.
They won't be going.
The road, the runway doesn't face that way.
No, that's what he's saying. No, 1-2, different runway.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
So my other question, since, I'll, I'll take this opportunity to jump in since Commissioner Pre had started the question. You, I assumed did a collapse study on this like you did for the tower to make sure that it wouldn't fall against or into the power lines or block any of the primary access roads?
So again, this requires a building permit and our standard building permit review with structural for anything, so we don't require a collapse study.
We, we understand that the building permit is going to try and make sure that the structure is sound and safe.
Yes.
The only thing that's missing from the, the sound and safe calculation is what happens if it does fall over. And one of those, it, it's now becoming a more common requirement among cities with tall buildings and tall signs and tall everything to evaluate what happens in an extreme quake, like a seven or eight or eight quake. Will the sign itself become a hazard for the people that are trying to move around for emergency equipment and things? Because it would, when it falls, will it fall into a key, key road, or will it hit a power line or other required infrastructure? So it's not a lot to ask. It's simply drawing circles on a piece of paper and making sure that it is not going to endanger nearby facilities if it did collapse from either extreme earthquake or from corrosion or from, you know, terrorism sabotage, anything else that can cause it to fall over. So just, I'll make it an issue later, but I'm not going to dwell on it. I just want to make sure that we try and get some of these kind of common reviews into the process so that we don't have a surprise later. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to correct, just to get the facts right, I think you mentioned there are actually two billboards within the 1,500 distance requirement, correct?
Correct.
So we'd be making an exception not just for one billboard within that distance, but two?
You would be reducing the distance length by 25% and in that those two billboards fall within that reduced distance.
Okay, thank you.
No, there's an on-premise LED sign at 3250 J Street, which is this one, and then another LED sign at 1300 Duane, which is this one.
And they both are LED?
They're both LED.
Okay.
Down the road.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, I got, I got one quick question. Now, why do we have the 1,500 feet? What was the reason we did that? Just, I'm just curious. Do you have the answer for that? Nobody has the answer.
Yeah, not, not specifically. It was probably a best practice when we were doing the sign code that, that was used.
Okay.
For distances, yeah. Visually best practice, yeah.
Okay, that's a good point.
But to extend that question, is the 1,500 inclusive of the LED lighting component, or was it written during the time of the '69 ordinance, which just said?
This is new. This is new. This is the new code.
Thank you.
Anything else from that end? Nope, good. Commissioner Beagini?
I'm having a little bit of a hard time lining up what's coming in and what's there already, because what I'm thinking about is somebody driving down 101 southbound as commute starts to back up. Are we talking about, I see an LED sign, you know, eight different gizmos on it, and then 15 seconds later, there's another one, and 15 seconds later, there's another one? I'm trying to get that perspective down because I start getting a little concerned about especially, you know, when it's commute and has been commute for a long time, everybody's already slow. But when it's starting to slow up, if people are getting so distracted by seeing what amounts to 24 different advertisements in the space of a five-minute drive, I start worrying a little bit about safety. So is there a way of, of showing, here's the one that we're talking about, and here's the other two, so I can get a kind of linear perspective of what somebody going southbound on 101 is going to get confronted with?
Street view of the, we can pull up the street view of the 3250.
Because that's my worry, okay? The distraction.
I believe 3250 J Street is invisible from, it is, okay. Yeah.
I don't think you can see all three at one time, though.
Yeah.
Well, you come in closer.
Drive down.
It's too far, yeah. We should have done a video for you guys.
So this is the 3250?
Yeah.
It, yeah, that one's not a billboard, it's just the...
Time and temperature.
Yeah.
That's one of the existing, yeah.
And then, oops.
Going southbound, the dog. We're getting to the gun range.
And then you can kind of see the Cocoa. So this would be the billboard.
All right.
And...
And then after that is a...
Yeah, but I'm not sure.
Again, I'm concerned about the ones you can see from 101.
Sorry.
In other words, if one is facing, you know, east or west. I guess another way to ask that question is, regular drive times doing, I don't know, 65 miles an hour? How much interval?
There you go. She's going to show you six, six seconds. There. Right there it is.
Okay.
See, that's the one you're going. That's by the gun range.
That's the static one. I believe 1300 Duane might not be visible from...
Because I understand what you're saying. We're talking about federal regulations, but what I'm asking is a little deeper than just what do the regulations call for?
Yeah, it might not be on.
Boy, somebody's a crazy driver here.
Yeah, this, this is the 1301. You can see it from Duane.
All right, so that's visible. Yeah. Okay. I'm beginning to think the easier question is, what is the time lapse between the signs?
Fifteen seconds. You were correct.
Fifteen seconds, yeah.
Fifteen seconds to go 1,500 feet at 70 miles an hour.
That's awfully close, okay? But I understand you're talking federal regulations or what the city looks to.
And look at the time.
Okay. I'm a little concerned about that. Done. I want to hear the applicant.
And through the chair, I just anticipate all of them becoming LED. Right now, they're showing a static.
Oh, yeah, this, this is a trend.
This is obviously one of many along the way.
Actually, is there, do we know if there, if this is the first one that's an LED on 101, 101 on Santa Clara roads, or we have more? We have more?
Yeah, so this 1300 and 3250 are LED. 3250 J Street is not a billboard, it's just an electronic digital display message sign.
Okay, so the concerns that the commissioners are raising stems from what Commissioner Kraslow mentioned, and I don't know whether we've done any studies there, right? It appears that we are concerned that there would be significant distractions and they would become important at times of, you know, traffic developing, right? So we, we probably have some information or data about that, right? Before the billboards became electronic, what the accident rate was at any given time and what it has been since. We probably should look into that. It would be a, you know, you have to go look at traffic records and whatnot and try to get that answer, but that's, that's what effectively everybody's saying.
Good.
Imagine, for example, take the extension here and all billboards on 101 on Santa Clara-owned streets become this eight seconds changing, right? What, what would be our, you know, safety hazard then, right? That's the question that everybody's trying to ask. Okay, I'll stop.
Thanks. Okay, Commissioner Beagini, one more?
One other small question. I assume that what's going to be displayed may not necessarily just be, hey, call John Doe for your law firm. It may also include things like, I don't know, upcoming Santa Clara Parade of Champions on this day. Yeah, people are going to stop to read that a lot more than they're going to read a law sign anyway. Okay, thank you.
It's a mandatory clause in the, in the relocation agreement. They are committing to provide a certain percentage to public service announcements.
Gotcha.
Like Amber Alert, for instance, Amber Alert, they will be providing that. But just, just one thing really quick. There is a LED sign on Palo Alto on 101, so if you want to do any studies, there's really this one there and also one in Redwood City, too. LED signs on Palo Alto 101. Thanks to our Commissioner Google Maps for helping give us some information. Are there any other questions from the diocese that we can move on to the public, or I'm sorry, the, the presentation, applicant's presentation? No? Any answers that staff wants to provide now before moving on? No? You didn't hear a question, I understand.
Oh, on a particular question, sorry?
Will we be able to do something like a collapse study? Will we be able to verify other LED signs for possible impact to public safety?
I mean, we won't be able to get you the safety data before you make a decision tonight. You need to contend the matter if you wanted us to research that, but could we add a condition requiring a structural study similar to what you did for the AT&amp;T Tower? Absolutely, I've got the language. I can just, you know, have you paste that in when you come to that decision.
That would be helpful. Okay, I assume for the, there, there's no recourse to this. If we approve it and we find out after the fact that this increases public, reduces public safety, there's no backing out of it, right?
I think there's a 30-day review period on the lighting, the brightness. So there, there is a public, like, the planning department is going to review it for 30 days.
Just want to make sure there's a safety net.
There's not. I mean, the brightness is one thing.
And then the words.
That doesn't refer to the issues with the safety. I could have it, let's say, at a lower thing, but it's still, it is a, like, looking at a TV, right? So it's not the same thing. So I would say that's not going to cover us. That was, would be my suggestion.
Also, how long is the lease on the land for, for the company that's putting the sign? They also have a lease to, to, in there, so there's also...
The CUP would run with the land, wouldn't matter. But, yeah, it's a conditional use permit. In theory, a conditional use permit is revocable. Our ability to revoke it for safety issues would be extremely limited, and I'm sure they would litigate if we tried to do that. I mean, we'd have to prove this sign caused this many accidents, and it's just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible.
If one person got into an accident and they went to court, regardless of the facts, right? They can still go to court saying, hey, this sign was, you know...
The cause.
Right, I mean, they would have to prove it in court, okay?
Yes.
My worry is if somebody died, you can't take that back. I can fix a car, but I can't take somebody's life back. That's my concern.
It's a fair concern, all right.
Then I recommend all the highway built in the tunnel, recover everything. Yeah, beautiful nature, whatever, blue sky, cover them, then you don't see anything. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can move on to the applicant presentation.
Thank you.
If you're prepared, if there is one.
There, there is the applicant, it's present.
It's not on yet.
There you go.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So the presentation you just saw, this mirrors a lot of what was already in there. We want to have more time for any questions you have or any comments. This is actually our third project with the city. There are already four LEDs on the 101 in Santa Clara. Two that we did were on Laurelwood, 630 and 941. We've removed 10 static signs in the city. I know this was brought up earlier, El Camino Real. That's the way that our industry has gone, away from the main streets and to the freeway. The city's received $210,000 from this, and this is really just identical to the 2011 relocation policy. We followed it verbatim. We're just doing one more, and that's it. And there's pictures you saw in the previous presentation, and 3362 El Camino Real. These illustrations often don't maybe represent the way that the actual look is, and I know that you brought that up, and it's not the first time I've heard it. So this is 14 by 48. If there's any, you know, concern, I would say it's really attributed to the, that illustration that was put up there that makes it look a lot bigger than it really is. It's not, they're 14 by 48. That's all we build, that's all we're allowed to build. And as you already discussed, the, the community aspect of it is huge, whether it's Amber Alerts, FBI, emergency messaging, local events, that is always part of these arrangements. If you approved the other ones that we've done with the city, then you've been through that and aware of it. The billboard fee of $70,000, Green Power. I was advised that these signs use less than a Tesla charging station for reference, and then the three signs you already saw on El Camino Real. And that's it. Open to any of your questions, comments, curveballs, anything?
I have a couple of questions for you. On the signs that you're taking down on the El Camino, is your land lease there up any time soon?
Yes, correct.
That's how, that's why you're taking them down?
Yes, yes. Whenever we go into these, we, we evaluate what we have and what we can remove.
Okay, so actually, we're only charging you 70K to do the, the fees, and you're getting eight signs for the price of one, then, in actuality. You're going to have eight customers with less maintenance, which is a pretty good deal.
Unless one customer buys all eight signs, the trend is digital.
Yeah, right, so you're getting a heck of a deal here, taking two signs that are falling down, you're already, your lease is up, and you're going to put one up, but there you can run eight and just manage it from your laptop. That's a pretty good deal, I only pay 70K. I think we should start charging a little bit more, then getting more money in our pocket, like about maybe 10 times that much, because you'd be able, you just think all the money you'd be saving.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. And how long is your lease for the sign on Duane?
Typically 15 to 20 years.
15 to 20 years.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah. I want to go back to what I was talking about earlier. So I understand it's just one more, but, you know, just one more can add up. Have, have you done any studies on the effect it has in traffic like that which we see in the Bay Area when you have four of them in one city, and then another one down the road, and then another one down the road? I'm looking at how many are in one city, and I don't think Santa Clara has a large linear footprint, so to speak, but I am concerned about the safety aspect. I like the idea that there's community advertisements, but I know even for me, if I see an ad that says, you know, buy your car here, or get your attorney here, I'm probably going to ignore it. But if it's something about an upcoming event in the city that's going to give me dates, times, and places, the odds of me slowing says, you know, buy your car here, or get your attorney here, I'm probably going to ignore it. But if it's something about an upcoming event in the city that's going to give me dates, times, and places, the odds of me slowing down greatly increase, and I don't think I'm unique. And that's where the safety aspect comes in, even though it's only one more. So that's why I'm asking, have you done any studies, since you're in this business, about the safety aspect during commute issues like ours?
Sure. The light study encompasses a lot of what you're, you're asking, and it's very in-depth, and it's also very long, and we have to do that.
Okay, when you say light study, you're talking about dimming brightness of, because I don't see that as having, I mean, whether it's bright or not bright, if I'm interested on when the next event's coming up, I really don't care how bright it is, I'm going to be looking at it. And, I mean, I hate to use myself as an example, but I don't want to use anybody else's one. And you believe the light study does enough to say that this is not going to have an effect on safety on 101?
In our experience, in, in many Bay Area cities, when it's come up, the light study has been sufficient to solve those issues. So it's, it's based on what we've been asked and what we provide.
Okay. I understand that, doesn't make sense to me, but, okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, to the chair. So thanks for the reference to the curveball. So one of the questions for me is, are you open to, what, what is the number of alphabets or restriction to the message itself that makes it easier to limit the concern we have? You know, is it a voluminous sign, is, meaning you have a lot of information being projected? Or is it a simplistic, like, you know, call, you know, an Apple sign, or something that is much more simplistic? What I'm trying to find from both staff, and is there an actual restriction on the content that can go up there? Who manages content? Like, what kind of content can come up, and what kind of free messaging, and what kind of limitation do we have on just the number of words that are being used?
Thank you for that.
May I suggest you add whether it's video and motion words?
Yeah, that's part of, I think it's static, but I need confirmation that it is static. But I think the static, I get it, it's eight-second flash, or it'll stay up for eight seconds and then it'll go. But what my, my question resonating is, what's your volume on your sign? Because 48 feet is a large sign. I, I can say that City of Sunnywell, you might know this, has a limitation of the square footage on its sign itself, and we, I don't think we have. Do we have a square footage restriction beyond the 48 by 14? Is that the max?
That is the max.
Okay. So you are availing the max, but then the secondary question is, you know, what is the type of content, and how do we limit, if any, under the current circumstance? There's a lot that becomes a challenge, but I just want to make sure it is not too voluminous or wordy.
Well, you're using the term content, and I think, but you're also using the word voluminous. So I think voluminous has a greater chance of being regulable, because you could say, you know, if there's 10,000 words on a sign, someone will take 10,000 seconds to read that, and, you know, will cause an accident. So maybe there's some potential for regulation limiting how much text they put on a sign? Maybe? Unfortunately, I haven't studied that. I'm completely confident we can't regulate content, you know? Hey, let's allow, you know, advertising for hot dog stands, but not for, you know, baseball.
Yeah, that's what I was going on, the free speech, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure, but I'm, I'm sure that's not what you meant. You're, you're more concerned about quantity.
Yes.
Rather than subject matter. Maybe he has some ideas on quantity.
Less is more. In what I hear from our creative teams across the country, it's always less is more. 70% of this, or more, or greater, comes from national clients. They already have the copy, and it's copy that's running in 50 markets, or, you know, 10 markets, and it's, it's very well designed to meet everything you're saying. I find that there's, the creative team works with the client heavily to do something that's effective, because in the end, you know, they're, they're buying advertising, and they want it to work. So I'm not in the creative side, but that's what I do hear and what I do see of, of the awards that are given every year. They have awards for this.
Yeah.
Is that there, there, there's not a lot of copy.
Okay.
And more images.
And to clarify Commissioner Crutchlow's comment, that it's not videos, like, you won't have a.
No.
Okay.
We, we have no videos. It's not allowed.
Along the lines of the animated, I'm going to get a question in, you have static transitions? You do not have animated transitions?
Correct. No, we don't.
So you do fade in and out? Or do you just do a blink? Do you, what form of, is your transitions between the eight panel views? Eight seconds. What's your transition between advertising content?
I want to say 10 seconds, that's a good question.
No, 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 no.
How do you transition between fade in, fade out?
It would have been a lot easier if you would have brought a presentation, showing us what your signs look like in motion. That would have made it a lot easier for the members of the planning commission that, you know, that have those questions.
Okay, you want to go ahead?
My name's Jeff McEwan, I'm with Outfront Media, and just to answer that question, it's immediate. It's just, the flips change immediately. So there is no slow dissolve to the next copy, it's immediate.
Yeah. Okay, good, as long as you're not doing page flips.
There's no, there's no motion allowed, that's against federal and state law.
Rotating, okay.
Yeah.
That usually is not considered content, and therefore I have to ask it separately because I do video, and video includes many of those effects.
Right.
And you don't want that kind of effect, because it itself is the distraction. So if you're just doing a quick flip, that's much more reassuring. All right. Other questions?
I could answer one other question that was asked earlier regarding the signs that are coming down. Those are also identical square footage, 14 by 48 feet. Yeah, so they're identical. The square footage coming down is, is the same.
Okay, excellent, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yes, I do have one question for the applicant, then. Real quick, so the, is the entire structure then being replaced? So the pole and stuff is also being replaced, as well as the sign?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's, I'm assuming to account for the fact that it's LED and weighs a little bit more, I'm assuming?
Entirely. They're freestanding steel, and they go deep in the ground. Same thing applies to like a cellular tower.
Your favorite subject.
Don't go there.
Sorry.
I know, he means me, not you.
Something real quick here. You know what would be really nice, since you guys are going to really be raking in the money from those signs, is giving the city some free advertisement in those signs.
Well, they're doing that.
That's part, because they're making them do it, but just do it out of their own goodwill.
Yeah, Commissioner, the relocation agreement requires that they will provide 10% public service announcements.
Let's do, let's do 20.
With at least 50% of that use occurring between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and we can use that for city announcements or copy from nonprofit.
20% sounds better, 10% is just so little. I, I know how much money they're going to be making out of that.
Well, let's stick to what is, is within our boundaries.
Well, to be clear, not that I want to open this door any further, you can make a different recommendation on the relocation agreement if you're dissatisfied with it.
We have to open to public hearing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And there'll be a rebuttal at the end of public hearing if there's any questions from the online or from public. Is there anything?
Close public hearing.
Second.
Okay. And then if there's a rebuttal to nothing, do we even proceed?
No, if there are no speakers, there's no rebuttal.
All right, thank you.
The motion was made by Commissioner Crutchlow, seconded by who?
B. Genie.
Nancy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question to staff and through the commission. So we have a total of 24 signs in the city? Is that what I saw in the ordinance? And that's what we are playing with, like, replace, relocate, replace, you know, but we're having that, no net gain?
I believe we have 17 signs, and we cannot exceed 17 signs, so when they were.
17?
Yeah, 17 phases, and then if they're removing three phases and adding one.
And do we have any restriction on how many signs can go on 101?
On 101, no.
What if they all move to 101?
Thank you.
It is a trend.
I think these guys said this was the last one they're doing.
That's theirs, that's fourth.
Promise? How many more of you are out there?
I mean, as you noted, there are not that many billboards left, and you got to take down three every time you put up another one. So there's simply.
Oh, I see.
Very few left to take down, there's so few left.
So, okay, that's a good ratio to keep. So every time you ask for a new, you have to remove three?
Yes, and that's been the policy for, for quite a few years. So we started with over 50 when this policy was.
Good.
So now we have less than half that.
Okay, good, thank you. Yes, Steve.
Yeah. There's also the 1,500 feet linear, linear feet distance.
Yeah, but then there's an exception, come on, guys. What's your point? You just said no, me.
One of the, one of the things you have to keep in mind is, land is scarce, and the ones that are within the city, like the El Camino, a lot of those properties there are being redeveloped, and the leases on the property to put a sign are coming up. That's the reason that they're taking their sign now, because they're telling me, no, we're not going to renew your lease, take your signs down. That's the reason that they're doing it, and then they're putting one in Dwayne.
It's an influence.
So just remember that, is, you, you don't own the land, the land is leased to the sign companies, and that's how it works. And they have to maintain the area around there, make sure it's clean and so on.
And do they get easements for right of way from the city to, for, who maintains these in an event?
Leasing company does maintain.
Yeah, but in an emergency? What happens if you have a structural?
They do add their names, Outfront Media will be on the billboard, so you are able to contact them, and then the relocation agreement also has that.
No, I'm thinking of more of an emergency. Do you, does the city have the right of way to enter from a protection standpoint, that this sign is leaning, it's, it's crooked, it's going to hit, it's going to hit the road?
You know that's going to be taken care of.
Like, we have public utilities meant for electric poles in homes, guys.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, I would assume you'd call 911, just like anything else that was going to fall over, but I would, I would assume that they would attempt to call the, the owner of the billboard first, but yes.
Well, if they called 911, 911 would take care of it in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah, they would, they would remove people out of the way of harm, yeah.
Right, I mean, today, if we have trees that are all of a sudden.
Yeah.
You call up 911.
Exactly.
You call 911 for trees?
Yeah.
Not the city?
Can, if, if it's.
Well, that's the city.
If it's a danger, if something's happening, like, it's like.
And our public works department would, would come and take care of it.
And just to add a little color, anytime you build a new structure, including a sign, the fire department reviews it for compliance with regulations. So one of the conditions of this is prior to building permit issuance, a five-foot all-weather perimeter pathway around the entire perimeter of the buildings to facilitate firefighter access is required. And then there's a longer condition about fire department access that goes on for a whole page.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, there is a requirement for public safety access.
That sign there in itself, I think, is inside a fence property, if not, if I'm not mistaken. Where they're putting the sign, I think there's a property there, it's like a yard?
No.
It's not inside. You're not in a, in a yard, in a storeroom yard at all, you're right in the open.
There is also something specific to gates in the conditions of approval. Priorities, building permit, a gate permit is required to be obtained. Openings for access gates located across fire apparatus, access road shall be a minimum of 20 feet of clearance. The fire department worries about this stuff, thankfully.
Are there any other direct questions?
Yeah, I want to go back, Xander, to the concern I have about safety. I don't know how else to ask it. Is there any way we could put some belts and suspenders around if the accidents increase? Something we can do about it? I, I'm not sure what that might be.
May I suggest something? May I suggest something? Because I, I think there's, there's a liability question here, and this is Xander's going to have to figure out, but. I think that by not doing the safety, some kind of a safety study or research on it, and putting it as part of our report, it's putting us in a difficult position.
Yeah.
And I'll give you, like, the DOT, the United States Department of Transportation, has a study on their website analyzing 18 sites in Alabama and Florida, found higher crash rates in areas influenced by digital billboards compared to the control areas, notably rear end and sides web collisions, often linked to driver distracting, more prevalent near these signs. Now, I do not know if these signs have video on it, or it's the same, so I can't say that. My point in bringing these things up, I would like to say more that we have staff go look at this aspect of it, because we don't have all the information. And it, being the concern that it is, I really want to make sure we're doing this right. And that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you on that, because if you're going to look at, was it Florida, what was the other one, Alabama?
Alabama.
I'd be more interested in what it looked like in Washington DC Metro, San Francisco Bay Area, and New York.
I don't have any, any problem with that, but I mean, it's, it's, it's the same, like, even Sweden did a study on it and said that this is causing more accidents, so.
That's my concern, and it's how do we address that?
I don't have a problem with doing it here, but, I mean, whatever studies are out there that we can rely on, they should be looked at and saying, okay, here's the significance of this, and that we have, that way we have the full information.
I like that idea.
It sounds like most of the accidents were caused by the signs that had, like, images outmoving or, you know, visual signs, but to make it, to simplify this and move, move this along, is just check with the ones in Redwood City and Palo Alto, see if it has caused more accidents on 101 or, or not. I'm more concerned about people looking at their phones while they're driving than looking at a billboard, because most people nowadays are just looking at their phones and then causing the accidents, so.
Why do they look at their phones, too? It's nice, bright, and they got, they got something to look at, and then they have something to look at up there, you know?
Yeah, there you go.
So I would say that we shouldn't, you know, limit the studies of where we can get the information. If the Department of Transportation for the United States has studies, we should look at that. Texas has it, we should look at that. If Redwood City and the rest of them have it, great, let's look at it.
The only study that I found personally and recently was inconclusive, which is disconcerting because it would seem common sense-wise that it would be an issue, but I don't think anyone has paid or formally organized a study to determine the actual impact.
Well, I can give you these reports and links if you'd like.
That would be good, that would be something for the.
But this is why I would ask for the, to go back to staff, and I'm more than happy to give what I found, and then they can do some additional research. Maybe, you know, there is, the Department of Transportation in California has some information about Redwood City and such, but I really would think that, you know, look, I, I hate delaying anybody on this kind of stuff, but safety for me and something like this is something I have to sleep with.
And not to belabor that, but the City of Sunnywell, we don't have to look too far. The City of Sunnywell has a two-minute hold, rather than an eight-second hold, from a static ad time. So how much one, how long one electronic message holds for two minutes, by which time reasonably you should have at least anticipated passing one sign, eight seconds you can still be in traffic in peak hour.
Well, I think it's like the difference between seeing a newspaper versus the TV.
Yeah.
And that's, I don't disagree with the, what you're saying, because I don't know the facts, but I'm just saying that looking at a TV is more.
Enticing.
Enticing than looking at it like the.
Absolutely. But if there's a way to minimize the distraction from a TV movement standpoint, you hold it static for at least a reasonably longer time than the eight-second is a possibility for consideration at this application time for us, not just as a future study.
I'll be interested in your motions.
Yeah, I think you want to make it a part of the motion, but I think with the, the math, I've already said it once, the math is, is you're going to take 15 seconds to go between the signs, you're going to see, if you can visually see this during that time, you will get two ads. If you're saying you appreciate a 15-second transition time, then you're going to see one in a fraction. So I don't know what the request would be for something like that.
In that area, traffic starts backing up at 2:00. In that area, traffic starts backing up at two o'clock exactly and it stays like that till almost eight o'clock. So you're gonna be stuck in traffic there seeing probably about three or four, five different advertisements going through the amount of time they're gonna be stopped there. So if any of you guys driven through there, two o'clock starts backing up all the way, you know, keeps on going till almost eight o'clock at night, then it starts to let down.
And that's the time when you want me to be watching the road, right?
That's the time you're not, you're not gonna be paying any attention anyway. You're looking at your phone or you're looking at the stuff and it's a car in front of you, sign up there. No, what, you have a plane going by, you also look out. Oh, there's a plane going over my head. People do the same thing when they're going by the airport. So just look at the studies that you said and also at Palo Alto and Redwood City that they have all those signs and see if they're gonna cause more accidents.
And I just want to elaborate a little more on city of Sunnyvale's message requirements. On-site EMCs may display non-commercial messages or messages advertising onsite establishments. Messages displaying off-site commercial messages are prohibited. Duration, signed messages shall have a minimum hold time of two minutes. EMCs, electronic messaging are allowed to be illuminated between the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM and only when businesses are open.
If I might, Commissioner, you've just articulated a rule that prohibits off-site advertising. This is a billboard that will pretty much only have off-site advertising.
That's what I'm trying to highlight.
So I suspect you're, you're reciting their regulations for basically an electronic sign for a business as opposed to their regulations of billboards.
Well, they, they don't allow billboards per se beyond EMCs, yeah.
But
Along 101, and this is specific to along 101.
Okay, interesting.
And then illumination shall not exceed, which I think we have our candlelight, our ambient lighting, foot candles requirement as well, so I'm not too worried about it. But the two things that caught my eye was the length of hold for an, for a message and then the illumination timeline.
If, if the commission ends up continuing this matter, I'd be happy to contact Sunnyvale City Attorney's Office before the next meeting to find out
Yeah.
what's behind that.
Yep.
I would like to encourage someone to suggest continuing only for the
Suggest to continue to give it back to staff for additional research.
For the safety concerns.
For the safety concerns.
Second.
Could you provide a little more direction on what you would like to see in the research from safety concerns specifically?
Sure. So number one, researching what Sunnyvale did. Specifically, what we want to do is the safety concerns with LED signs that are static and do they increase accident rates on highways? So if there's any statistics that we can get from, I don't know, there's a transportation department for California that would have that information. Any studies from any other agencies that have done these studies, like the one, I'll give you the links to the ones I have for the, you know, the United States Department of Transportation and such, but specifically to the safety of having those kinds of signs and do they increase accidents on the highway?
Yeah, and if it's
Is that right?
And, yeah, no, I, but I think he's capturing it. It's also this idea, like Priya was saying, you know, two minutes versus eight seconds. You know, no, it doesn't increase accidents. Well, is that because in that particular jurisdiction, it was a two-minute hold instead of an eight-second hold? I mean, that's part of it.
That definitely, yeah. Does that give you enough, Leslie?
Thank you.
I'll second your motion.
Well, I'm not sure there's been a motion yet, but I would ask that if the motion is to, if there is a motion to continue, if you would please first move to reopen the public hearing so that we don't need to renotice this.
So
I can move to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
But that's based on the consensus that it's already on a continuation.
No, it's not. It's simply to, it's a procedural thing. We can then vote on the continuation.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Thank you, the motion did pass. Now that you have reopened public hearing, we do have a hand raised.
Oh.
So Xander, we can go ahead and hear the, the public comment, is that correct?
Yes. We might as well, we're here.
You're, you're, it is, it is within your discretion to allow additional public testimony, but you will then need to allow the applicant to rebut.
Yes.
May I say something about my vote? Yeah, I, I wouldn't know because I think efficiency is low at this commission. We keep on talking about safety. Personally, I think we should trust the professionals, their judgment, how many minutes or how many seconds you can, you know, change the content. Yeah, I, personally, I support the applicant. I think it's a good thing for public since you also display some critical information, right? I'm sorry to, to see this thing get delayed. That's why I wouldn't know. Thank you.
Okay, I agree also. That's one of the reasons because we're going out of the scope of, of what we could do because actually the Department of Transportation already approved this before and it meets all the guidelines with illumination. And the only concerns that I would have was between the fifteen hundred and eleven hundred square feet and it just is not fair for us to go in a fishing expedition hoping that we could find out what is going on in Washington or in someplace else. And while the Department of Transportation here, especially in California, says, you know, it's okay to have that, that's those signs in the road. So, yeah, I guess I think we should just go ahead and, and make a motion to either vote on this or not. This is
I respect our fellow commissioners' opinions and perspective. I personally would like information in order to make an informed decision. And the information is available, it simply needs to be researched. And if it means delaying approval of this by one meeting, I am perfectly willing to delay the approval for by one meeting to have a more clear conscience on the decision being made itself. I am not of the opinion that trusting everybody without looking is not, I don't believe that that's a wise path to take. So that's why I'm in favor of hearing the motion on continuance. And we still have a public hearing person wishing to speak. So I'm ahead with that.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so iPhone guest, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, my name is London Epper, Santa Clara, city resident. And I've been up to Redwood City on 101 and that light is blinding, especially if you are coming around sunset. So I would ask to have staff look at how blinding it is. Headlights now are very blinding also and it's not just because I'm getting older. The other thing is look at the angle of the billboard and whether it's, how much the sunlight at sunrise or sunset is going to affect it. And yes, I know sunrise and sunset changes very much over the year because of the, the angle of the sun changes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So applicant, of course, gets a rebuttal for any comments made.
Not required, but if you want to speak again, you can.
Regarding the last call, the, those are all in San Carlos. There's no digital currently in Redwood City. So they're, they're all along the corridor there of San Carlos. The lighting is downward motion and as far as changing of the sun and the light, it's all controlled with sensors. It goes just above ambient light on all of the digital signs. And again, just to reiterate, there are currently five digital signs along the same stretch of freeway that have been proved, approved over the years. Our first one was in 2016, then again in 2022 and installed last year. So this is not new to the city or new to the Bay Area. There are over a hundred and twenty digital signs throughout the whole entire Bay Area. So it's just, it's not new and, and that's just the fact that it's not like we're bringing in something new that needs to be studied. It's been studied and those reports are all available through the federal and state regulations. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And since we have our public comment open, I'll just add, because I know we, we will need to move at some point, but I do want us to look at neighboring cities. We have an opportunity here. I do know cities that do not allow any digital signage along 101 period. We have an exception because we have a net sum zero game here of trying to reduce, but recognizing that we have an opportunity to get at least enough information to make this viable with, can we add more conditions of approval rather than just the minimum code? It is up to our discretionary. If everything were staff, then it would not be discretionary. It would be considered an administrative permit and it would have gone through. But because we have a discretionary capability and that's what the role of planning commission is, we have the intention and purpose and almost role responsibility that we ask the right questions that other members of public may not be able to ask. So with that, I will second the interest for this commission to continue the site.
Seconding the interest, not a specific motion. It was a sentiment, not a specific motion.
I haven't heard the motion yet, so.
There's no No, yeah, do you have to close public hearing again?
No, we have to leave it open.
Yes, I'll leave it open.
That's why we had to open it.
I understand, but I just wanted to know how to get closed again.
Waiting for your
All right, so let's, I move that we continue and send us back to staff to do some more research on the safety. What was the other thing you wanted to add to that? The, and specifically, did you want to?
The whole time, the illumination and the, the, say that again? Yeah, and the message.
Standards, but, and most importantly, the safety standards.
Exactly.
Safety standards, I take that back. The studies that have been out there in reference to additional accidents due to LED signing.
And is it to the date certain of May 21st? That would make
You tell me, you staff, and does that give you enough time to, to do this?
Is that enough time or do we want to do June? The June meeting would be June 11th. And there's no meeting in July.
Correct.
How busy is the May 21st?
It's pretty busy. Yeah.
We have a June, but not a July.
Yes.
Yes. Well, yeah. We're trying to be reasonable to staff. Staff recommends June 11th.
Okay, so I hear the motion to continue to June 11th.
Yes.
Date certain.
Second.
By the way, just want to state that I have every confidence in staff.
Yeah.
You know, this is not any kind of reflection. I saw this and it was a concern of mine. I know you guys do a very good job and I just want to make sure that I'm not in any way saying anything
I agree.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Eric, I'll second that emotion.
Commissioner Crutchell, we're waiting for your vote. Thank you. Thank you, the motion passed. The item is date certain, continue date certain to June 11th.
Apologize to the applicant that we want to make sure that this is covered. Actually, I don't apologize for that. I apologize that there's a delay in making sure that this is covered. And it doesn't positively or negatively affect people's votes. It's just an opportunity to cover the details. Thank you. All right. I guess we move on to item three, which is a recommendation on general plan text amendment for the 2023 to 2031 housing element sites inventory list. I was giving some heads up on this.
Any chance we could take a five-minute break?
Yeah, sure. Let's take a, a short recess. Thank you, five minutes.
Okay. Okay. Are we ready to start the meeting again? Okay.
I'm not loud enough without it. I tend to be. Yeah, we're moving on to item three, which was announced, a recommendation on general plan text amendment for the 2023-2031 housing element sites inventory list. This is a clerical sort of bookkeeping issue. Is there any comment that wants to, the staff wants to make?
Staff does have a presentation for you. Our senior planner, John Beatty, is attending virtually and we're giving the presentation. John, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right.
Um, can you?
Yes.
See the presentation and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, excellent. All right, well, good evening Chair and members of the Planning Commission, John Beatty with the Planning Division. Staff is requesting a general plan text amendment to the city's housing element to remove one site and add a recently approved project to the site's inventory. As you hopefully recall, the housing element is one of the required elements of the city's general plan and includes policies and programs intended to help the city meet the housing needs of all current and future Santa Clara residents. State law requires housing elements to be updated every eight years and to be reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. HCD, at the end of that update process, certifies housing elements that they find to be in substantial compliance with state housing law. The city's sixth cycle housing element, which covers the eight-year planning period that ends in January 2031, was adopted by city council, then reviewed and certified by HCD in May of 2024. Although jurisdictions are not responsible for building housing, cities and counties must identify enough potentially developable land that has been analyzed as being suitable for residential development within the eight-year planning period. And one of the required components of a housing element is a sites inventory, which must be maintained throughout the cycle and demonstrate each year that the site's inventory has sufficient capacity to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation or RINA in all affordability categories. This table shows the distribution of the city's 11,632 unit RINA into lower, moderate, and above moderate income affordability categories. And this, throughout the course of the housing element update, the sites inventory, as well as the rest of the text, went through many revisions based on input from the public, including from the Housing Action Coalition, property owners, developers, housing advocacy groups, and of course, HCD. And in response to feedback received, the city conducted substantial additional analysis and consulted closely with HCD staff to refine all aspects of the text, including the site's inventory. This table from the adopted housing element is a summary of the sites identified to meet the city's RINA. And yeah, that worked. The bottom line of this table that just got highlighted or circled, boxed in red, shows that even in addition to meeting the RINA, the sites inventory conforms with HCD's recommendation that all jurisdictions include a 15% to 30% buffer beyond what is necessary to meet the minimum RINA numbers. And then this table shows the changes in red that are being proposed with, once again, the bottom line of this table, illustrating that the proposed change would not impact the city's ability to meet its required RINA with a sufficient buffer. More specifically, the buffer in the lower income category would decrease. It would go from 33% to 18%. And in the moderate income category would decrease as well, from 31% to 23%. The buffer in the above moderate income category would actually increase from 103% to 116%. And it, so in the interest of addressing the Housing Action Coalition's ongoing concerns and because the proposed removal of the 4701 Patrick Henry Drive site from the site's inventory would not impact the city's ability to meet the required RINA with, again, that sufficient recommended buffer at all income levels. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to recommend the city council amend the general plan housing element sites inventory to remove the Patrick Henry Drive site and add the Mission Point project. And this concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll start off with questions then. Perhaps for the edification of the public and the online participation. What is the current AMI for City of Santa Clara?
And let me, one sec.
Average mean median income.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just doing that for others because TLAs are no fun for people. And a TLA is its own TLA, so yeah, we've had that come up. Google said something like 167,000, but I thought you might have a more.
I like to, it depends on the number of residents.
Right.
Talking about, but let me, let me see. I know for something else I had saved a table. Chair, you had to, you had to ask a question.
Oh, yes, stop the presenter, sorry. It's usually reserved for Xander. Yeah, I just think it would be helpful to know because last time I checked, the AMI for the US as a whole was 67,000. And we're running at about 167,000.
I thought it was like 180,000.
180, I like the numbers, they were more dramatic to say 67 and 167.
The whole person is 180,000.
It's in the presentation, slide, second or third slide.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, it's literally in the presentation, right?
So, I don't know if I'm still sharing.
Sharing view of your Googling.
Am I sharing myself? I'm not sharing anymore. I could just verbally then tell you while I search for the share button again.
I think this is more helpful to know, kind of a leading question, really. We're, there you go.
Okay.
So, this is in 2024. So for a family of four, the median income in Santa Clara County was a whopping 184,300.
Right, right. So our low income is, our lowest income level is still substantially above the AMI for the country. And I think by definitions, we would need to have poverty level, income levels to match the lowest level of our low-cost housing. Is that a fair statement? Yeah, I hate.
Well, I don't know about fair. It's probably not, it's not something that we, or anyone, any other jurisdiction in the Bay Area. The comparison to the rest of the country is pretty tough. I mean, other counties in the Bay Area have, you know, maybe not as high, but pretty darn high AMIs.
Yeah.
So.
I think our RINA numbers are basically just, they're not really addressing the issue of trying to assist low-income housing because our lowest income housing is still substantially above average wages and levels for service workers and things. I think this is something that we were going to talk about with city council and city council was going to talk about. So we spend a lot of our energy and our effort pursuing providing housing and providing low-cost housing. But it seems doomed in the sense that we can't provide the lowest income housing necessary to meet the needs of the average service worker, fireman, policeman, et cetera. So, you know, I don't know if the energy we're putting into all the RINA numbers is going to benefit anybody. Okay, that's all, I, yeah, it's more of a statement than a, just sort of a reality check. Hopefully others will notice this when we start throwing around AMI as our baseline.
Chair, can I have?
Sure, go ahead.
Terrifying question. Thank you. So I'm just trying to understand the changes that you're making. So it looks like the buffers are reducing in the low incomes and the buffer is actually going up, meaning the reserve that you have in case you need to go more or, you know, for further plans, next eight-year plan, you, we are getting more, you know, space to do so in the higher incomes, right? So I'm just trying to understand, this is coming about because of a recounting? And, you know, adjusting to the facts? Or is this what we are planning to do? Or is this what we want to do?
I can take that, John. We are doing this in response to a threat of a lawsuit from the Housing Action Coalition. The Housing Action Coalition criticized our housing element throughout the two-year process it took to adopt it. At its last iteration, they criticized something like four different sites in our inventory, maybe it was five. We met with, they threatened to sue us. We met with them and they offered to settle. They would not sue us if we would agree just to remove one site from the inventory. Right around the same time, we were in the process of approving the Kylie project. So we said, okay, how about we agree to remove that one site and you agree not to challenge us adding the Kylie site to the inventory? And they agreed to that. So we brought this up with the city council in closed session. And while the city council cannot commit to any sort of general plan amendment without a public hearing, they told staff, okay, continue the process, put this before us at a public hearing and we will consider it. So that's what we're doing now. This is basically an effort to make a lawsuit go away from the Housing Action Coalition. We believe the one site that is being removed still could be developed within the planning period. But as was shown, we still have a buffer even without that site. And so it's, you know, while it's not great to reduce our inventory, it's also not that harmful, especially when we add the Kylie site back in.
Thank you, I understand.
Through the chair.
This, move across.
Okay.
Go ahead, next.
Me?
You're next.
Okay.
You go, go for it.
So specifically, why was Patrick Henry Drive the project that we felt so vulnerable about?
Why did?
We commit to removing it.
Yes.
Yes, they are just as real as Kylie, Tasman, specific others. But why specifically did we agree or we've basically sacrificed the ability to swap Patrick Henry? What was more vulnerable about that? It could be any number of factors.
Right, so there were, there were, again, four or five different sites that they took issue with. We felt that the other sites in the list were more likely to redevelop than this one. While we still think this one has potential, it is owned by a whole bunch of different property owners. So to, and it's in condos, separate parcels, they'd all have to be amalgamated. All of the separate property owners would have to agree to that. There's easements on the property. So there are a number of obstacles to getting it redeveloped. That being said, several of the owners, actually a majority of the property owners, participated in the Patrick Henry Drive process. So there was, you know, motion towards redevelopment. But still, quite a few things have to happen for it to get redeveloped within the planning period. So because of that, we thought, okay, on balance, that one's all right to let go.
So just to prolong the confirmation about 470. When did we issue the DA for Patrick Henry Drive?
There's no DA for Patrick Henry Drive.
Oh, so it's a.
Specific plan.
Okay.
2022, right? Is that when we approved it?
2022.
Yeah.
And in essence, are they by any means time-bound? Or is it just a hypothetical specific plan that when these owners come, they will adhere to the requirements of that particular specific plan? Unlike a DA or a development agreement like Related or Keely or?
Right, the specific plan does not expire. There's no time limit on development.
This was basically just a precise, specific plan lingo? And we have other projects that are much more restricted or time-limited?
Yes.
And that's Keely project, okay.
Makes sense, thank you. Other questions here now, next?
The Keely project is the one that I'm really, I have some doubts about it. It's because that's owned by a Chinese firm. And, you know, with all the stuff that costs to build this project here, I see that project falling apart. I actually do feel that thing's going to collapse and they're going to end up selling it to somebody else's property.
Well, if you're speaking to the likelihood of development.
I'll probably be dead.
We do have to have some reasonable belief that a property will develop to include it in our inventory. So we actually put this on the prior agenda and continued it because we wanted to have additional time to discuss with Kylie, what is the likelihood of development? If you recall, when the project came to you, there were two options. One of them was develop in area D. And then later, they introduced the option of, how about we also make it possible to develop in area C? So our first thought was, okay, that's great, that's 2,600 units. That's beautiful, let's put that in the inventory. But then in talking to Kylie, they said, well, remember, area C is optional. That could still be commercial. If you make it all residential in the housing element, we'll be obligated. And then we started talking about timeframes for development. And so they asked us to use a reduced number from the 2,600. We're actually only adding about 800 units to the inventory. John can correct me with the exact number. But that was what they considered a reasonable for. forecast for development. So that's based on conversations with the developer, their forecast. They do have a long development agreement. It could go longer than that when they break ground. But this is what they told us was realistic for the eight-year period, and it will help us maintain our buffer. We believe it's a good idea to include it at this time, especially since the Housing Action Coalition has promised not to sue us for including it.
That's like where monkeys walk, right? Well, we'll see. That's the business side of it, and we are not involved in that. Any other questions, Nancy? Commissioner Hong? No? Okay, I can assume we open to public hearing. And is there, there's no applicants, so it's just public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this issue? Online or here?
Yes, we do have a speaker card for Daniel Alvarez.
Thank you.
No.
You've got to have the red thing on. Keep going. Keep going.
Press it for until it goes off.
I don't know why that's so problematic. You're looking for this to come on, red. There you go.
Hey, hey.
That's to be a manual here or something. So, good evening, Chair of Commission. My name is Daniel Alvarez. I'm a representative for Local 405, the Carpenters Union. I represent over thirty-six thousand members all over Northern California and more than six thousand members here in Santa Clara County. I'm here to discuss how essential housing and healthcare for fair wages are for the carpentry industry as a whole. One of the biggest challenges our members face is housing affordability in the high schools of living here in the Bay Area. I've been working with members that travel all the way from Modesto, Los Baños, and all the cities on Central Valley because it's very hard for them to afford housing over here. They spend a lot of time on traffic, commuting, and all that time, they can spend it with their family, raising their kids, and, you know, having quality time with their family. If we want this project to truly support the community, they need to build it by a responsible contractor, contractor who pays fair wages, you realize apprenticeship programs, and invest on skilled workers. When contractors cut corners, workers treat unfairly, wages go down, and the community suffers. That's not the kind of community Santa Clara needs. Please, make sure that the housing projects are done the right way by contractors who respect workers, follow labor standards, and help people behind, build a good careers. That's what makes a good community, and that was Santa Clara needs. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
I do have a hand online. Linda, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Thank you. The first table showed the AMI, and then the second table showed the AMI being much reduced for very low income. Could you project those both again, and then I will be done? And why, I guess, is the one question. Why did it get reduced?
So, we aren't changing the definition of what very low, low, moderate, and above moderate is in terms of percentage of AMI for the city. So there is no change to AMI. The change that's illustrated by these two tables is what happens when you subtract the units that were assumed for forty-seven oh-one Patrick Henry Drive and the units that were, are maybe likely to be built with the Mission Point project. So the thing that has changed is the total number of units in the different affordability categories, and then the surplus percentage above the RENA that are being provided for each of the affordability categories.
Okay, so we lost some of the buffer. That's basically the results, right?
In lower and moderate, yes, because of the nature of the assumption regarding the majority of the Kylie units being above, had actually resulted in an increase in the above moderate category. But as far as affordable, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Hopefully that helps answer the question. I'll ask one more time. Any other additional speakers?
No, we do not have any other speakers.
Move to close public hearing.
Go ahead and cast your vote to close the public hearing. Thank you. And the motion passed. Thank you.
Okay, is there any concerns within the commission?
Yeah, comments?
We'll start to the right this time. Comments?
Go ahead.
So, Xander? Should, where do I add the labor language to ensure that that's a part of this?
Why would you add labor language on this one?
It's a general plan amendment.
It's a general plan amendment, not a specific project.
All projects have already carried it. Remember, when you did Tasman, when we did Related, we recommended to city council that they consider.
I wasn't real sure about that. It's already in there? Xander?
Because I'm not real sure.
Housing element.
Not in the?
The housing element's a different thing.
Yeah, where, I mean, there was this red line in your packet, and it basically crossed out one number and put in a different number.
So the rest of the labor language stayed.
Yeah.
There was no labor language because it's not an actual development.
Just make amendment.
It's just a?
It's a designation that developments would occur.
I got you. So I have to wait until they actually, let me put it differently. I need to wait till they actually come up with the game plans on the site that we're building before I say, where shall I add the labor language?
Well, you added it for the Kylie project, and that's the project we're adding to the list on the housing element.
And it's still there.
And that has not gone away.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I make a motion to close? To, go ahead?
So we have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
No, we don't.
No, we have to make a motion to make the recommendation.
That was for closing.
To city council, here goes my motion, guys. I was trying to look for the confirmation. Okay, recommend general plan text amendment for the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one housing element site inventory with the recommended addition and deletion of sites to city council.
Second?
Too late, I stole it. Click the button.
Nobody looked at the button.
I'm sorry. The motion was made by Commissioner Chair Cruz, second of the chair, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this is to?
The first.
Adopt a resolution to recommend the city council amend the general plan housing element with revisions associated with changes to the housing sites inventory.
Yes.
Okay.
One thing that occurred to me, Commissioner Chair Cruz's earlier question, why this site and not one of the other ones on their list? One of the other sites was a lab. They showed pictures of this R and D lab and said, there's no evidence that this lab is going to redevelop into housing. They showed us pictures of the inside of the lab. They listed that property for sale. The bids have already been taken. It's going to redevelop. So, yeah, you know, weighing them, this, this.
Understood. Thank you. Good work, staff.
Thank you.
Very good. The motion passed. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four. Public hearing recommendation on a general plan amendment to remove the Lawrence Station Phase Two, Central Expressway, and De La Cruz focus areas. What, are you going to scrape them off the face of the earth?
Why?
Just the map.
Remove it from what?
Remove focus on it, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Steve Lee, senior planner, project planner for this item four here. So the considerations, or the actions for considerations before you is the recommendations to the city council to approve the general plan amendment to remove the following focus areas. Lawrence Station Phase Two is west of the Lawrence Expressway. That's a focus area. And the other two sites, Central Expressway, future focus area, and a De La Cruz future focus area. Here is the map of the original, or just all the focus area and future focus area. Just explain what you're seeing here. Lawrence Station Phase Two, that's in dark blue. That's the focus area that's to be removed. The two other blue, lighter blue, Central Expressway and De La Cruz future focus area to the right there. Some of these other areas highlighted in terracotta here is specific and precise plans already approved. These are areas where housing or transitioning to. And next slide here, why are we removing them? So there's land use transitions. Housing has transitions outside of these subject areas, these focus areas, and then is to maintain the existing industrial and office use. We don't see these sites as ideal sites to turn over from office, warehouse, industrial to housing. Also, just to consistency with state laws requiring general plan consistent with zoning. So we did a zoning code update of recent, ensuring that the zoning district that we have now, the industrial, is consistent with the general plan. So we're proposing to maintain that industrial use of those sites. I'll go one by one on each of the site here. Lawrence Station Phase Two Focus Area, current zoning districts, light industrial. This is bounded by Central Expressway to the north, Kafer Road to the south, and Sunnyvale to your west. The general plan right now is light industrial. The existing use is mostly manufacturers and offices. So the property owners here, you know, large property owners, doesn't show any interest to change these sites to residential. So that's the reason for the change in this area. The Central Expressway future focus area, this light industrial as well, one small PD plan development site for, I believe, manufacturer or data center. General plan is light industrial, and, you know, for this reasons, the site is primarily data centers and office, and you won't see data centers changing to residential anytime soon. So that's the reason for this site. Last site here, De La Cruz future focus area, again, light industrial and even heavy industrial zoning district presently. And same thing with general plan. Existing uses are manufacturer, warehouse, and office throughout this site. You know, this is also located near the airport. So, you know, airport landing zone would call for lower density. So, and there's a lot of multiple property owners here. It's going to be difficult to consolidate them and turn them over to residential. So that's the reason for this site. As far as public outreach, we did a committee meeting. We sent a large notice, five hundred feet around each of these sites here. Twenty people attended. Three spoke on affordable housing, you know, what happens in this, you know, where the housing moving to, and the transition into specific plan areas. On January twenty-ninth, we did a referral for tribal consultations, just per state law. No consultations was asked from us. And then April second, the notice of public hearing for this meeting, as well as we smelt out five hundred feet for all three of this area. Two callers, residents in the De La Cruz, asked, you know, just for clarifications, what's the request? And so I provide that. So, yeah, and one email requesting the clarifications as well. Okay. For environmental, it was already previously evaluated. On January thirty-first, when city council approved the addendum to the sixth cycle of the housing element, it was already considered to remove these three areas. So these areas are not accounted in the inventory. And so that brings to staff recommendations for planning committees to adopt resolutions to recommend the city council amend the general plan to remove the Lawrence Station Phase Two Focus Area, Central Expressway, and De La Cruz future focus areas, and make associated text at this. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Let's start with a simple one, for the benefit of the video and for anyone watching this later. Define focus area.
Define where the focus areas are?
Yeah.
It is in the diagram in the general plan, and that is on figure.
I think what he means is what a focus area means in our general plan.
It's in.
My glasses focus, you know, a lot of things focus, but let's get the terminology in more.
It is in chapter five point four of our general plan. It's focus areas is where the general plan anticipate residential development. We identify them as focus area and some in future focus area. And over time, some of these housings, you know, become a specific plan, precise plan, like the downtown precise plan, and others gone away, like we're removing these sites here. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, just, I wanted to make sure it was something that other people could understand when they came back and look at this, because it's a magical term for most people. Okay? Other questions?
Through the chair.
Commission?
So this is just a hypothesis.
Okay.
So we are saying you, we don't want to have residences here. We want to have data centers here.
They're already there.
My point, if you had had a focus area, they would be grandfathered and not new. You just made my case. To basically say, this is almost sounding like a vested interest. I will leave my hypothesis for interpretation, and I'd like to know where the origin of this came from.
May I submit, focus areas, the idea is that these are spots we have identified where we will do a precise plan later down the road. So there's actually general plan policies that's, before you do redevelopment, you got to do a precise plan for this entire area, like a specific plan. So by de-designating these as focus areas, it just means it's an area with a lot of industrial parcels. If one or more property owners want to redevelop their land, they simply apply for a rezoning and a general plan amendment. There's no longer a requirement that the entire area have a precise plan or a specific plan, because we think it's simply unlikely that that's going to happen in any foreseeable timeline. So individual sites could redevelop, but we're not requiring that the whole region get a precise plan before they can redevelop.
Nice try.
Because we just don't think it's likely to happen.
Nice explanations, Xander. Thank you so much. That was just a long way of saying, no, that was not our intent. It is really, you know, another way. You have a gazillion other specific plans. You have gazillion other precise plans underway. There is no reason why only these are recommended to be removed and not those specific plans that have El Camino precise plan. Let's give it a shot. Okay, that is in focus right now. We have housing as becoming the much more, currently it's a retail, this light, you know, maybe light industrial along the way of El Camino. But here we are. El Camino precise plan is fully fledged and is in motion. This is the same, I would say, notion when we said, okay, these are focus areas for the city to encourage more, a different use possible. And the focus area is to see, can there be housing? By intentionally removing it, now we no longer have a focus, because, and then the existing zoning and existing general plan will continue to just allow. Exactly. So there is no more, there is no more interest or intention.
For housing.
Exactly.
Correct. Yes. And Central Expressway, particularly given the number of data centers there, it would be very difficult to make a neighborhood.
Different.
Correct.
There's already neighborhoods down Central Expressway.
Microphone?
On the other side, yeah, there's.
Yeah, there's already residential areas alongside the Central Expressway, but close to Costco.
Yes, and not, and not that area, the Central Expressway for the purpose of this map. Yes.
Yeah, but they're coming down towards this area here. I see it coming down towards the, towards where the fiberglass companies, I see it coming this way.
The size that are actually, that are the old ones that run.
Oh, God, I, yeah. You're telling me, I used to run the creek trail like I see them being built, and go, what the heck's going on?
Central Expressway appears to be coming, or turned to be, turning into the proverbial railroad tracks. And if you build on one side, you get one thing, and if you build on the other, you get residential. So I understand the logic of this. It's, it just makes sense, I guess, to ease up on forcing. It's, it just makes sense, I guess, to ease up on forcing group development, but is there other implications to this that aren't being presented in this presentation? Are there other concerns that you want to convey? Is this easing up the ability for developers to work in this area, or is it restricting them more?
Well, it's easing because you cannot develop residential right now. You have to do a comprehensive plan first. This removes the requirement to have a comprehensive plan for individual parcels. An individual developer cannot just rezone a site right now. They'd have to get a specific plan first, which is, you know, a multi-year process.
Does this, I'm sorry, I'm occupying here, but does this create a situation where we will result in a patchwork quilt of development within those areas? Because the transitions are not being maintained any longer.
Yeah, if you were to want to convert the industrial office land to residential, yes.
Yeah, that's the purpose of the precise plan requirement, to have a unified vision for the region. But, you know, since we just don't think there's a likelihood of redevelopment.
Correct.
Okay, question?
Just a real simple one, just being naive. So if somebody, let's say we do this, right? City Council approves it, and somebody in that zone wants to build a data center. Would they have to come here and ask permission, or it's like, nah, it's already zoned properly, you can do it?
They'd need a CUP.
Yeah. Conditional use permit?
Yeah, sorry, conditional use permit.
It's currently zoned industrial. A data center requires a CUP. They would need that. Actually, whether you take this action or not.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
So to carry this logic further, right? It's important. So, so the commission then denies, then it's appealed to the city, it passes, and the first data center that gets built in any of these areas prohibits anything else being built in that area. And then it'll get populated with data centers before you know what.
There you go.
To be clear, data centers can be developed today.
Yes.
Whether you do this or not, the only thing this will do is allow for piecemeal residential development. Our current general plan does not allow individual residential development in these areas without a comprehensive plan. But data centers, they can go in today, they can go in whether you remove this or not.
I see.
So does it make it easier for data centers or easier for residential?
It makes it easier for residential. Data centers, I mean, well, okay, so if you leave the focus area requirement in place.
Right.
And then there's actually a movement to develop a specific plan and zone it all as residential. Once that specific plan is in place, then it would be hard for new data centers to go in.
Understood.
That's a long way down the road.
But otherwise, I think I had the answer I needed.
Yeah, let's ask the question. Can I ask the question, like, just look at the other side of this question, right? What if we leave it as focus areas?
That's what I'm saying.
What do we lose?
You lose the potential for individual sites to go residential. Right now, there's no concerted effort to take large swathes of land and form a specific plan on these.
So in this, you think there is potential that, there is potential that in these industrial areas, light industrial, whatever, these very highly industrialized areas, there's any chance anybody will want to put a residential tower or space in there?
Yeah. There has been interest, and the city does not think this is an appropriate place to put residential this time, which is why we'd like to remove the focus area for residential.
There's going to be something coming in front of us that is light industrial office across from Costco. I believe that's going to be coming in front of us.
Yes.
And that's close to, you know, there's no housing there except for the other side, and that's almost right next to the runways, about a block from the runways. And it's going to be coming in front of us. That's one of the things.
Correct.
You know, you completely, you know, never thought of building houses there.
Correct.
Except also what they build apartments where FMC used to be. Yeah, so this is a lot of.
Correct.
Yeah. So it could happen, folks.
Yes, it could, absolutely.
And it probably will happen, folks. In the short term, I don't think.
My turn. So it is theoretically possible that you would get housing in these areas if, for example, low-cost housing, retirement are two candidates that would logically not concern themselves as much with being in an industrial, previously industrial area, because the property might be less expensive and the opportunity to build taller might be more available. So it feels like a double-edged sword in the sense that, yes, we could encourage data centers, but they're going to come one place or another anyway. But it could also equally encourage satisfying more of our low-cost housing and retirement and other.
Right.
Less residential thinking groups.
If you actually take a look at the aerial that's on the screen, the areas that are north of Central Expressway, a majority of those buildings already are data centers. Some of them south of Central Expressway are data centers, yeah, where Steve is pointing. The ones along Walsh, the properties along Walsh, those small office buildings, really are the only ones with potential to develop as residential. And really, that, that doesn't make, that doesn't make good land use planning or a good neighborhood. So the city really felt, we are developing residential neighborhoods elsewhere. We've done the Freedom Circle Focus Area, which was not contemplated previously in the general plan. And so that would be a better swap for this focus area that was, you know, this focus area was originally considered in 2010 as a possibility for residential, but given the development that's happened since then, and we've moved to do the Freedom Circle Focus Area instead, where residential is actually developing, that we should take this one away and now focus on somewhere else.
One of the things that you mentioned, just to enlighten you up here, Walsh, there was offices, there wasn't any industrial or anything, there were just offices, and that's budding residential area. So if you put the data centers or whatever as in there, you're going to be putting right in the back, back door of a residential area. And that's what my concerns are. I'm pretty sure nobody in the City Council wants to have a data center in their back door.
Let's save that for the data center.
Yeah. So, so, no. This isn't our conversation.
What we're going to be voting on right now.
Through the chair, so my, the focus today is, no pun intended, sorry, the words are here, but the real intent here is to remove focus on these areas for a possible future, whatever use it wants to be.
Conversion to residential.
Mostly residential.
Yes.
The irony of it is, the current interest is not self-proclaiming that it can allow housing, because housing will need a general plan amendment under the current, because it's light industrial. So if a developer wants to come in, that would be the developer's now new general plan amendment, zoning amendment, which is an additional layer versus a focus area that would have encouraged a possibility of a housing happening more as a nature of right, by right. So the probability of that happening now is gone, is what I am trying to say. So when we say the city has no interest, we're not asking the city to do it tomorrow or even in the next five years, but why remove the focus is my challenge. When you say the city thought of it, you're basically sending the green signal to say those parcels along Walsh are really future data sites, because what else can come there?
Well, they already can be.
That's what I'm saying. But if you had a focus area in thought process, technically, they could be offices, they could be retail that are abutting the housing.
They could be today.
No, that has to come with a general plan amendment.
No, no, they, they.
Well, the light industrial general plan.
Well, light industrial allows some amount of office, but yes.
But I'm saying that it is not focused towards residential or supplemental residential.
Right, well, the point of a focus area is that the general plan is telling the city where we want to put our residential growth. That's the point of a focus area.
And then you're basically declaring, we don't want residential here.
The point of removing this is that, yes, we're declaring we would not like to put residential growth here.
In essence, we are now telling the city, no, we don't want.
Don't worry about residential.
Exactly, in these.
In this location.
In these areas.
In these areas.
It doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be data centers.
Correct.
Because they also have no electricity, and there's a waiting list of, what, like 10 years, is what I heard last time?
The video, that's going to be.
No, it's not in the video, but there are other people that have been wanting it. But, okay, so I got a couple of questions I want to ask here. So in, in making the focus, okay, from a staff perspective, by doing this, right? There's two areas of questions ahead. One, you had in there, and this is a simple one, on the presentation, you had talked about that this brings us in line with some state regulations and stuff?
General plan consistency.
Yeah, could you elaborate just a little bit more on that? So if we didn't do this, we would be out of?
Yeah, so you, right now is a zone as light industrials, heavy industrials, and now is, there's conflict, because then if you anticipate for this residential in the focus area, you're not aligned with the current use, which is light industrial, heavy industrial.
And what is the consequence of that?
I don't think there's legal vulnerability. It's just awkward. It's not, you know, I mean, there's, you can't have a general plan that's internally inconsistent. This is not a legal inconsistency. This just preserves this possibility. If you don't change it, we're just saying, okay, maybe it will change to residential and will require a comprehensive plan.
Right, but that's why I always ask it, because in the presentation, it talked about to bring it inconsistent with state. Did I misinterpret that?
Well, I mean, we have, we have focus area policies, so it's a little awkward to have policies about this area that we don't believe is ever going to redevelop as housing. It's like.
That part I got really well. That's not a problem. I understand that part. It's just, okay, we're not going to be, if we said we didn't do it, we're all of a sudden going to have a different problem, that we're going to have to deal with the state saying, hey, you're not in line with our regulations, right?
It's, it looks funny. It wouldn't be my first pick for how to draft the general plan, but it's not going to get us into legal trouble if you decide to preserve them.
Okay, then my second question was, okay, you got a lot of work to do, staff-wise, right? If we said, okay, we're going to keep this as a focus area, how does that affect staff and our ability to work on all these different projects at the same time? Is it something we can say, look, yeah, it's focused, but that doesn't mean we have to do it tomorrow anyway, we can just leave it for however long we want to do, but there will be focus at some point, right?
It won't generate any extra work for staff.
Okay.
Other than that directs people to try to propose, propose development in wrong locations.
But not, but not specific development projects. It'd have to be the entire area.
Okay.
Conjunction.
Yeah.
Well, I want to make sure that we're not burdening staff in some way by whatever way we go.
After that, we thank you.
We do get a considerable number of phone calls, so I can, I can say, we answer a lot of phone calls specifically in this area and emails and meetings, so there is some staff time.
Okay.
Just because of the message that the focus area sends, that this could be residential.
Let me double check that I'm hearing this correctly, that you were saying it would ease development to remove the focus areas for those areas to be able to diversify into other types of development.
It would, it would send a more appropriate message that, you know, residential isn't appropriate in this area any longer, given the existing built uses.
Is or isn't?
Is not.
The planners have made the call that this is not an appropriate area for housing and have suggested we should remove the focus areas that say this is a good place for housing. We have a general plan policy that says you cannot put housing in these areas until we get a precise plan for the entire region.
Right.
By removing the focus areas, that policy will no longer apply. You no longer need a precise plan for housing for the entire region, because we don't think it's a good place for housing at all. We don't want housing there. If somebody comes in with a housing proposal without the focus area constraint, they can simply apply for a general plan amendment and rezone.
Right.
And staff may recommend denial, because they think this is a bad place for housing. They don't think you should have housing right in the middle of an industrial area.
That contradicts my original question about patchwork. So if you.
They can apply for a patchwork, but staff may recommend denial. But right now, they can't even apply for a patchwork. They have to get a precise plan.
Well, I've always been in favor of options instead of mandated development. I'm concerned that it's going to discourage concerted effort for, for development of housing, specifically in those focus areas.
It will.
But we have, we're not diminishing the available options people have for housing. We're just saying that these are not good areas for it.
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of a, that's a, that's a tough mental.
My head hurts.
We've done lots of other conversions to make up for removing these, these focus areas, you know, such as adding the Freedom Circle Focus Area, which wasn't anticipated. The Kylie Project in itself, which was in, you know, office industrial, was converted to allow housing, so.
The city is actually generating its own focus areas through the very nature.
Through other conversions.
Of individual developers building in certain spaces. They're, they're sort of evolving a housing-friendly zone in our city by developing in those places.
Right, right.
And that seems natural, that's SimCity. It's unusual.
I mean, the, at the time when these were designated as focus areas, the conflict already existed. It was pretty apparent, everybody knew.
No, not this much, no.
This was 15 years ago, 2010, or a little before that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We only had 30 data centers.
A lot of these didn't, a lot of these didn't exist.
That's the problem.
A lot of these did not exist.
All right, so, where are we?
We're at the point where we could probably make a motion.
Well, wait a minute, don't we have to?
Use public, yeah.
Public hearing. So can I move to open public hearing?
Please.
Move to open public hearing?
By consensus.
It's disconsent, consensually just.
All right, good.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
If anyone would like to speak on this particular topic, it's a good opportunity right now, if you have an opinion, please.
I do have a hand online.
All right, go ahead.
Linda, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Okay, it's Linda again, Linda Nepper. And if you look at the screen that you were showing, which I can't see right now, where Walsh curves down the ankle, basically, there's a big data center right there, and the City Council has agreed to have a data center, by my understanding, actually on Bowers. Right now, it's a mostly empty space. The ones that I really wanted to talk about, and I don't know how to see it on the screen, is the Lawrence Station. Lawrence Station is an intersection of Sunnyvale, Santa Clara County, and Santa Clara City. The reason why I bring that up is because they did a great job on build, rebuilding the Caltrain Lawrence Station, and then they didn't do streetlights. Nobody thought it was their problem. They finally did streetlights. The other part is, right now, the city of Sunnyvale has, just south of the Caltrain Lawrence Station, built a humongous amount of housing, apartments. And just north of Caltrain Station, Lawrence Station, is another building that I think is supposed to be senior housing, but I'm not sure on that. So that area is getting built up. Once you get up to Kafer or whatever, whatever is closer to, across the street from Costco, yes, that is a, an office building. And I just figured that putting it in the mix of, make sure that you know where the boundary lines are and what's happening just over the boundary. Thank you.
That's a fair comment. You want to look at how that puzzle piece fits.
You want to look at how that puzzle piece fits to the adjacent pieces to make sure that we're encouraging similar development to create pods of residential rather than isolated Or similar development, obviously. Okay. Any other speakers? Thank you for that.
No, we don't have any other speakers.
All right, motion.
Move to close.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
This is to close public hearing?
Yes, it is. Close public hearing. Commissioner Bottinger, your vote is not showing, but I'll put you down as a yes.
Again?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, now for time for motion.
Actually, if there's any last comments, your opportunity is now for someone to motions.
So just a question to staff through the chair. What if we do not recommend? What happens?
It's a general plan amendment, so it will be forwarded to the city council with your recommendation of denial or your recommendation of no action.
It's no action.
Either way, it goes to city council, yes.
Okay, council gets the next pass at it?
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Either way.
Either way.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to broadcast my intent. I find it more helpful to have options available rather than forcing large groups or large chunks of our areas to be similarly developed. But I think the natural evolution of the city is going to define it more than any focus area is going to, so having them gone would make it actually easier for the evolution to naturally happen. No false barriers, so I'm kind of...
That would be a logic for all focus areas.
Not disagreeing with that statement.
Yeah, that's going to be for all the focus area.
Anyway, shall somebody make a motion?
Well, I'm interested, because right now, I'm trying to really sort whether removing the focus area makes it easier or worse to do housing. As I understand it with the focus area there, you've got to have like a big overarching plan. Without the focus area, hey, I might want to put a residential spot in this parcel and something else, including data in another parcel. So I am struggling over what makes it more easier for a developer to come in and do residential. I understand city staff says, hey, you know, we don't think it's a good idea to put residential there. I'm going to guess that's because of all the data centers and the light industrial around it. But with our HNAs and all that stuff going on, there's another part of me that says, so why do you want to take the focus area away then? Maybe, maybe, so I guess what I'm trying to do is ensure that we do something in a way that allows for more residential to be built without doing it in such a way that says, we're going to make it so easy for a data center that nobody's going to really want to do residential because the developer's going to get more out of a data center.
That's where the money is.
And, yeah, because that's where the money is. You're right.
You know, here, I agree with your sentiment in one sense, but I also agree that what staff is saying makes sense because it is an industrial area. It isn't necessarily that they're going to all do data centers, and I think we're getting too hung up on that it's all going to become data centers.
Well, yeah.
But it's also not an area that I necessarily would want to create a residential either.
Well, me either, but I'm looking at, when I have conversations with neighbors, friends, and family in the city about affordable housing, and the eyes immediately roll over, you want to tell me what's affordable and what isn't? And would this be a place where affordable would be, you know, because you can go higher, that it might be more feasible, more okay to do a high tower residential in a place that's got a lot of industrial? I mean, it's, I'm not sure which way I'm going to go right now. I think I know.
So I'll ask you one question about that. How much stuff that we've approved actually winds up bringing a lot of affordable housing here, especially housing that you can purchase rather than rent?
Dare I say, well, there might not be quite zero, but talking to most people who have a definition of affordable in this city that I know, they'd tell me zero, okay? Because with the AMI, which I thought was more than 160, I understood it to be 184. So even 50% of that is more money than most service makers make per year, so, you know, there you go.
Even if you make $250,000, most young families cannot afford.
You know, I'm less worried about how many developers could increase their bottom line as I am about how many service workers and teachers could live in the city that they work in. There's that. Thank you.
That's a bigger question.
Conversation.
It is, but how much this plays into it.
I totally agree, and we actually have a item seven, which can help us focus on that, so let's...
Right, okay.
Make a motion? I'd like to make a motion.
If I can just add my logic to the conversation. If we didn't remove the focus area, just like everyday life, you will still get the applications that are coming either way. The question why we are here today is, we have a certain interest or had an interest 15 years ago to revisit or revision the opportunity sites that the city can think of, and this was one of many. We have so many focus areas. The hyper-focus right now to remove these is giving me an added sense that there is another layer at play here. Because if you had not brought this to our attention, you know, it would be a data center, it would be a housing project, it would be a zoning amendment. It would have been normal life, but bringing this to an attention is now telling us, okay, we are removing this with a message saying that this is more open and less housing-friendly. It's more open to light industrial. And I'm not saying any particular business other than light industrial as its classification, but it's less friendly for housing. With the focus, you could have still, 15 years even down from today, you could have still thought, hmm, maybe we can still consider housing. But right now, we're just saying, no.
Things will change. Look, for instance, Reliant built the new high rises. That was all light industrial and some manufacturing there. Who would have thought 50, 55 years ago that that was going to happen there? So what we're going to be doing is closing the door on everything. So things change, and we don't know, we're not going to be here. Most of us will probably won't be here on how things are going to change, but it's all going to come back to us. How come those guys sitting on the, that commissioner is so dumb that they couldn't see the future? And that's the problem that I, you know, that kind of bothers me. Things will change. Data centers may end up disappearing someday, too, the same way that a lot of the other manufacturing did in our city. So let's just keep this open. So go back to it.
Let's try and get back into the past.
Make a motion?
Make a motion, please.
Make a motion that we recommend to the city council, approve an amendment to the general plan to remove the Lawrence Station Phase II focus area and the Central Expressway and De La Cruz future focus areas and make associated text edits.
Second.
This way you can say yes or no.
So the motion is to approve staff recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Commissioner Bottinger?
I did already.
Sorry, it's not showing.
Okay.
Thank you. And the motion did not pass.
Okay. No, that's good. That proves that there's confusion and concern, and it's worthy of conveying that, and hopefully the council will have a steadier hand and come up to their decision. But I would have been happy of having no action personally.
You do need a second motion.
Moving on.
You need a second motion.
I will ask for a second motion.
What?
Oh, well, I mean, a majority of you have expressed that you don't want to recommend approval. If somebody wants to make a motion to recommend disapproval or to forward it to the council with no recommendation, I would appreciate either of those motions. When you...
I move that we forward it to council with no recommendation.
Second.
That's fair.
But I need an actual formal action taken. With a quasi-judicial decision, if you don't approve it, it goes forward as a denial. With a legislative action like this, I need it actually taken affirmative action. So what you did is fine.
Right, got it.
Second's it.
One more.
Yeah, actually, the option that I hadn't considered.
What's the motion, sorry?
Wait, so it's, well, I take a challenge on that. So we are basically saying we did not want to make any recommendation to the city. That's not the message that I got here.
That is what Commissioner Crutchlow just made a motion for.
You can make a substitute motion.
Another motion, that's what she was asking, to say, okay, do we have a recommendation at all or not to allow for that if the recommendation now is to keep the general plan with as-is with the focus areas of Lawrence Station to Central Expressway and De La Cruz as focus areas?
Well...
Because all this is saying is to remove, but when we said no, that basically said, do not remove.
So first of all, parliamentary order here. Did somebody second my motion?
I did.
Okay, just want to make sure that happened. Now you can make a subsequent motion to say, do this, and yours actually goes first.
Right, yeah, so that, because I didn't want it to be interpreted that the city council take away that Planning Commission did not make any recommendation at all. That is not the interest. We had a whole deliberation around why we should and why we shouldn't, and we've made an intentional choice to not have the focus areas removed. So the motion flips to say the recommendation to leave the general plan as-is with the focus areas of Lawrence Station to Central Expressway and De La Cruz focus area still in focus, in other words, is the motion.
Would it be easier if I just removed my second and then it makes it cleaner for her to do a different motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what I thought. I'm removing my second. I'm kind of familiar with parliamentary procedure.
Second being removed, the motion dies. Commissioner Jerkirk, would you like...
I just made the motion.
I heard it. You're right. Commissioner Jerkirk just moved to recommend that the focus areas not be removed.
Second.
From the general plan.
Let's go.
And Commissioner Boozah seconded.
Now we'll have the same vote.
So the motion is to recommend that the focus area not be removed? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Thank you, and the motion passed.
So you just had the opposite happen.
That's what I'm saying. Now we are recommending...
Exactly, but it needs to happen for legislative actions. We can't infer how you want to change the law.
Yeah, because what could have gone is Planning Commission did not have any recommendation on this matter to you. Very different.
Yeah.
I disagree, but, okay, let's just go on.
I'm glad.
Let's go. That was the color I added to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, so we don't need a third motion then because we've declared as a commission... Oh, please, let's end this one. Please. That we have decided that we don't want it removed. Right. Within majority. All right, so we are on to...
Oh, this...
Bye. Thanks for visiting.
They like it.
We have item five. Public hearing, I'm sorry, recommendations related to the adoption of the second zoning code cleanup ordinance and rezoning of properties currently designated transit neighborhood to R6 Transit Neighborhood Residential. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, John Davidson with the Planning Division. Just as a point of clarification, the second part of the cleanup, rezoning the Tasman East area from TN to R6, will not be considered tonight due to a noticing error, and we'll bring that back in the future as part of the next cleanup, most likely. So tonight is exclusively about the ordinance itself to clean up the zoning code. This is the second round. And just, I sort of just want to take five seconds to frame what we're doing with the zoning code, and it's really to implement the general plan. And there are a couple of examples tonight where we're making changes to the zoning code to get a little bit more, a little bit closer to the intent of the general plan. So that's how I'd like you all to think about it. The first one, and it seems almost trivial, is that we're recognizing existing patterns of development and building usage. One of the ones that we've heard, one of the big issues that we've heard of from brokers who are trying to rent space to people who want to use industrial properties, is that we have a lot of buildings in the low-intensity office R&amp;D district, and they're fundamentally industrial. They're not going to be used for low-intensity office anytime soon because they're not built that way. And in our zoning code, we actually do not allow the sort of typical industrial uses that we categorize under a catch-all called minor industrial, that if that was allowed in the low-industrial, low-intensity office R&amp;D district, that would be more in keeping with the intent of the general plan, which is to have this district be sort of a transition between light industrial and office R&amp;D. So this seems, this is a very minor change, but a very sensible one. And I just wanted to show sort of a typical building that we, you know, hear of or that's at play when a broker comes in and talks about this issue. And the thing that I think is interesting here is this is a typical '70s industrial building. It has a loading dock. It has a number of roll-up doors indicating that this is unconditioned space that's most likely used for workshop or some sort of storage, but it also has a little bit of office area. So it's a mixture of the two. It's a mixture of both office and industrial, and our code should be reflecting that and should be recognizing the existing buildings that are around and available for use. So that's one minor, one very small change within the text of the zoning code, but we've heard from a number of people that this will solve a lot of problems towards making buildings more usable and available. So another bit is, we're trying to better align allowed uses with the general plan. We do have mixed-use areas. This is actually in Cupertino, but this is an example of a mixed-use property that has medical services as one of the retail uses. Currently, our zoning code doesn't allow that, and we're amending the tables in the zoning code to allow it, but then to also adjust the mixed-use districts a little bit because in the original code, we allowed things like ambulance services in mixed-use districts, which would be much better in industrial districts. So just making those minor tweaks to make our zoning code a little bit more usable and friendly to the environment that it's in. Always got to have a picture of a good super graphic, so allowing kennels or doggy daycare in the LI Light Industrial District as a permitted use seems completely... as a permitted use seems completely reasonable. And we, there's a fair amount of demand for that kind of a service, so makes sense. And one of the other things that we've sort of come across is we've, we were trying to deal with how to treat equipment sales and rental facilities. And we did a fair amount of research into this with looking at what kind of business, businesses, equipment rental facilities are. And I think part of the conception was that equipment rental can be a retail type business where, you know, homeowners come in and rent a rototiller, something like that. And, and so we were thinking that it shouldn't be something that's in the heavy industrial district because we don't want just people off the street wandering through the heavy industrial district. But as it, as it turns out, equipment sales and rental are almost exclusively construction outfits that are renting to other construction outfits. So it just makes sense to be in the heavy industrial area because these are loaders and steam rollers and cranes that are being rented, not rototillers to homeowners. So that was also a very, you know, just based on sort of evidence base, that was a very sensible change to make. We also made a number of changes to our single family standards and just cleaning up some of the graphics within the code. One of the things that we added was to clearly call out, in our old code, we actually had a minimum 20 by 20 garage, which is not in the new code. In the old code, it was 20 by 20 interior clear. So everything had to be away from, or you had to be able to measure 20 by 20 between the walls. And for, for most homeowners, that's, that's just not possible because people have washers and dryers, people have storage areas. So what this small tweak does is it reinstates that 20 by 20 idea, but it also requires a total of 17 by 18 for parking. So you can still have some area for your storage space or your workbench or your washers and dryers or your water heaters. But you also have to show that you have available space for parking. The new code also includes minimum dimensions for driveway lengths and widths for the garage or for the, for the driveway itself. One of the other things that we, we included is our code calls out the need for, or calls out daylight planes as a pot, as a way to sort of feather the amount of development that happens adjacent to residential. And what a daylight plane is, in this case, or in, in the zoning codes case, is a 45 degree line that starts at the property line at zero and sort of delimits how tall buildings can be. And so basically, they can increase one feet in height for every one foot back from the property line. What, you know, just in the course of talking it through with all of the other planners, one of the things that we were a little bit concerned about is the, the need to, to make sure that big buildings can still be built, that the, the daylight planes aren't unnecessarily constraining development once you get a ways back from single family residential and duplexes. So as a group, our decision was to have daylight planes and at 40 feet away from the property line. We've also created a daylight plane that's different for side property lines because there are occasional instances where there is, there are large buildings and zonings that would allow for large buildings at a side property line to, to residential, which is unusual, but we still wanted to call it out and have a slightly different condition. Some of the other changes that are in the cleanup are changes to the density bonus law. These, these are just exclusively changes that are from the state. Things like expanding the, the range of density bonuses that are available to developers. You can propose much less in the way of, or at least propose a little bit less in the way of affordable housing and still get a bonus in terms of density. This, this is in Lawrence Station. This is a, the top end of Lawrence Station density is 100 dwelling units the acre. This was developed at a little over 110 approximately. And it was also developed with a concession to have less parking. So I, I like this a lot just from the standpoint of when we saw the, the elevations for this, we thought this was going to look terrible. And the developer actually did a very nice job of constructing this property. Really a, a nice addition to the Lawrence Station area. A couple of other things that are involved with the cleanup that are a result of changes to state law. One thing that should be included per state law is that we have a lot of areas that have no required parking because they're within a half mile of transit. State law language allows the, the community development director, when there is substantial evidence, and I just really want to underline that, that it's not, it's based on firm evidence that, that there is a problem with parking in the area. And it would lead to the inability to develop either affordable housing or that it would affect the existing neighboring housing or commercial areas that the director could make a finding that it's necessary to, to require parking. But again, substantial evidence is the key there. The other big changes that we've added or we've revamped the wireless section to be consistent with federal law. And a lot of that is including additional opportunities for things like non-discretionary approvals for co-location. With that available for questions. And the recommendation is to have city council or recommend a city council that they adopt the cleanup ordinance. Thank you.
Chair.
Okay, sir.
So there is still such a thing as R one and R two?
There is.
And then when you say substantial for the parking, you need substantial evidence. I mean, there's four things that are listed in there in the law about what can happen. And if you, when we did the study on Kylie, I'll still go back to that one. That one, the number of people in that building, given that you had 2,600 units, the number of transit, mass transit, which is very close. If you had to have 1,500 to 3,000 people all of a sudden use mass transit, you would inundate that mass transit, given that the buses are coming every 30 minutes. So I would think that would be something that's substantial. Would, would you agree with that or no?
I believe this.
No, I, I think, I think that's a bit, or I'm, I think that's the reverse of what the substantial evidence that needs to be shown. That there, there needs to be shown that there's a parking problem caused by the development. Not that, that everybody needs to take transit because of the development.
A substantial negative impact on the existing residential or commercial parking within one half mile of the development project. And in order to withstand the inevitable developer litigation, we would need a traffic study. We would need a parking study done, and it'd have to be done within 30 days of the application being complete, so.
Right, but you still would have to go and reference it back to AB 2097, right? Says that you can, you can't. You can't.
Right, right. I mean, it's all part of AB 2097. We, this is the procedure we would follow. We're, we're giving ourselves the option of getting that study within that 30 day window before we basically put down our pencils and said, if it's within a half mile of transit, we're not doing anything. Now we're giving ourselves the, at least the option of scrambling, getting that parking study and making that call that you're going to need parking.
And that is meeting that standard that you're talking about, that it's substantial evidence? Is that what you're referring to when you say that?
Right.
Okay, okay, good.
Good.
So in, in actuality, you know it's going to happen if you're going to build a high density next to a single family neighborhood. And it's not going to be, even though you have a bus line going through there and there's not going to be any parking, all the cars are going to end up going to the, to the single family neighborhood and just creating a mess over there. So you, you know, that's, you don't need a study to figure that one out.
We would.
Well, you still need the study, but I mean. To meet the legal requirements and you did the work.
Yeah.
Right.
Common logic.
It's parking and not.
Yeah, it's just like. You can't play your violin with just one string.
Yeah, common logic unfortunately isn't submitted as evidence. So.
Well, our duty.
This is kind of really a small point, John, but I was confused about something. You had a slide with El Camino Health that you said was in Cupertino because Santa Clara doesn't allow for that in a mixed use. Don't we have that already at Santa Clara Square? Or is that, or is there something different about Santa Clara Square's urgent care center?
Santa Clara Square is a PD zoning, so they.
What?
Santa Clara Square is a PD zoning, so they have different zoning standards.
Okay, all right, that's why, all right.
How about the, on Lafayette, you have two clinics, one that does operations just by Home Depot that do surgery, right? And Lafayette, it used to be a commercial building, and then there's another one right by Walsh.
That's not mixed use zoning.
That's not mixed use, no.
I think that's.
Yeah, that was.
I want to say that's light industrial.
Yeah, I think that's light industrial, the one by Home Depot.
Yeah, because you have mixed use next to them. That's what I'm, there's a little area there.
So, so may, our city of Santa Clara's mixed use zoning districts are mostly along the arterial, so places like El Camino, Homestead Road, you know, those areas would be areas where you could have a mixed use building that has medical services.
So the, the garage change that you showed seems reasonable, but at the same time, it doesn't feel like what's being built. So I'm curious as to how that would be considered enforceable?
I think a lot of times what planners who are interpreting the code are struggling with are people who are making changes to existing single family homes and just having standards that allow planners to relate back what needs to be built.
So if a resident had one car.
Pardon me?
If a resident had a single car, they're fully, right? They have the right to fill in the other half of that garage with things. Not saying build into it, but they could put their storage shelves. They could have a play area for their kids. They could do other things without creating a code enforcement issue?
That is technically against the code, but we don't enforce it.
They could be cited for having half of their garage used.
You could be. I mean, don't tell San Jose my, my garage is full of junk.
Now that they're watching, yes.
Yeah, I know.
On Zoom session, watching it.
Okay, that's interesting.
He snitches his cellphone.
I have to go home and check my garage.
Mine'll be cleaned by nine AM tomorrow.
Code enforcement call coming through.
Okay, were there any other considerations on some of the pre-wiring for EV and other things that we've talked about before? Was that anywhere in our code that homes should be wired to have a 40 amp or something in the garage?
Well, that's, that's.
That was a separate question. I'm sorry, that's out of left field, but.
Yeah, all the EV parking charging provisions are in the REACH code, not the zoning code. So we're not making any modifications to that.
Our garage wired, like, as Commissioner Boozah said, our garage is wired for dryers. Is there, that's just planned development, right? There's nothing in our code that says you should provide a 40 amp outlet in the garage?
No.
For a dryer?
No, for any, anything, just a plug, a 40 amp.
I mean, I can tell you what the REACH code requires.
Okay, I would appreciate it because I, I haven't found it. And I kind of went looking for it the other day.
You went reaching?
I'm reaching. I'm hoping, you know, that we're also, I'm kind of looking ahead to what our study plan, our planning, work plan thing, I'd like to talk about that at some point. EVs are going to be a topic that I want to talk about.
And while Xander's pulling that up question for, through the chair. So the, are there changes that we were looking at in the past? The maps being corrected, the zoning map, the district? Are we, with this correction, fairly stabilized in our zoning code now? I thought the design objectives were still going to come sometime, right? The design based standards or objective design based? Are they still going to come?
Those are still coming.
Okay, and that would be considered a zoning amendment too?
Possibly, yes. Yes.
Just picking words?
I mean, we have, we have design guidelines.
We have design guidelines. We are, we are, we are developing objective design standards for residential currently.
Right, and, and a lot of our work with things like objective design standards has been things like taking existing policy documents like the Tasman East Plan and pulling out all of the stuff that are standards.
Standards, yeah.
And removing the stuff that's a guideline and presenting that in a slightly different format. So it might not get incorporated into the zoning code, but it will be another area where we can point to and say, we have standards that you should be, that you need to follow, that you shall follow.
We're, we're still working on how we're going to.
How you're structuring it.
How we're going to implement it and how it's going to be structured, but yes.
Because technically, zoning ordinance was where we looked for setbacks and, you know, heights. And, and now with the separation anxiety that it'll give to the objective design standard, I just want to make sure it still has an affiliation or an umbrella that it is one document, not.
And it might, it might end up in the zoning code.
Ah, that's what I was trying to, so this is just a work in, towards.
We're working on it.
Okay, got it.
A single family home would have to have one level two EV ready charger. That means a 208 slash 240 volt, 40 amp circuit with an outlet. And it must have.
It's a REACH code.
One level one ready if there are two spaces, which, you know, we still technically require two, two covered spaces, but if they're near transit, maybe they'll only have one.
Well, that's, that's helpful because I'm not seeing those kind of topics brought up in our. I, I've been perusing lately in my spare time. Okay.
That's a new construction, correct?
A new construction. So, yeah, I mean, I don't think we've seen a lot of single family projects come forward in recent years. But yeah, we definitely impose that.
All right, let's, do we have to do public?
Moving on.
Is there any other comments here before we move to open, available public hearing part of this? No?
Move.
You don't need to move, it's just, we opened a public hearing. Is there, are there any comments or anyone wanting to speak on this issue?
No, we don't have anyone online and no one in the chambers requesting to speak.
Can we close?
Make a motion to close public.
Second comment.
We all agree? Let's go.
Go ahead and cast your vote to close public hearing. For some reason, yours is not working. I'll put you down as a yes. Thank you. Motion passed.
So any last comments before we entertain a motion on the, the item? Not seeing any motion.
Let's move to accept staff recommendations now. You have one and two here. Do we do it as two motions or one?
We're only asking you to do one. Number two will have to be brought back at a future meeting.
So recommend that the city council adopt the zoning code cleanup ordinance.
Second.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Biogini, did you second? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Crutchlow is. Yeah, he, you're on motion machine. Yeah, he, you're on motion machine today.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Nancy always does it, and I always feel bad for her that she has to do so many motions. We always depend on her. Nancy's great, so I'd give her my.
Motion passed, thank you.
Proceed to make amendments. Well, actually, proceed to recommend.
Is everybody waiting for me to make a motion on the second item? Okay.
No, we're not doing the second item, I thought.
No, no, that was it.
No?
Yeah, that was it.
That's it, yeah.
That's it?
We're done.
There was only one motion and it was what was up on the report.
Right, got it, okay.
Not what was on the RTC.
Before we jump into the study session, I think there was a mild confusion over the work plan, item seven. Is that something we do need to talk about or don't need to talk about because of the timing? We're not meeting with the council concerning our joint dinner.
Not, not till June?
Right, so we don't need to do that today, right?
You don't need to, but I thought that's what you wanted to talk about.
I said that when I thought we were meeting earlier.
Oh, you don't have to, no.
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to offer the option of.
Okay.
Of moving that item to a future meeting.
I will say that we do have a large agenda in May, but we do need to have your draft presentation done for preview in May for you guys to look at so that it's ready for you to present in June. So if you want to just quickly take a look.
I thought the presentation is for May 20th, City Council?
No, no, June. We don't have the date yet in June.
Oh, I see.
But, like we did last year, we kind of previewed a draft presentation and then you as the chair kind of refined it and then gave it. But, but the commission got to weigh in on a draft, right?
I have a question. Would this be the right time, just through the chair, sorry? I think I would like a refresher on what Xander is and is not under the purview of the Planning Commission. In other words, what areas should we not be going into? And I don't know if that's something we fit in work plan or what, but I wanted to throw that out there. In other words, there's things that are not our purview and there are things that are our purview, and let's keep our comments to what is our purview.
Well, yeah, Commissioner, that sort of speaks to the importance of due process rights.
Right.
Because when you make decisions, you know, as you've all seen the due process training, but due process, when you're affecting somebody's property rights, you have to give them a fair hearing before an impartial decision maker. Part of the fair hearing is you gotta make your decisions based on evidence.
Right.
That supports specific findings that are in our code.
But that's what I'm saying.
So when you stray outside of what those specific findings are, it can be problematic. So I'd be happy to give my due process spiel at, at an upcoming meeting so we could refresh some of those.
I think that would be something that I would like to see coming up.
Huge help. We want to make sure, is that, I think jointly, that we're not discussing topics that are outside of our area of influence, and we are not diverting the meeting's energy into topics that don't serve the purpose of the meeting itself.
Yeah, sometimes it's really clear, like, at the, you know, when you had the cell tower issue and you weren't allowed to talk about RF emissions, but you could talk about aesthetics. There are other constraints, you know, where if you talk about something that's not one of your findings for an hour and then you make a decision, it makes it look like you decided something based on the, yeah. So sure, I'd be happy to, to, to bring a focused due process presentation where we can talk about, like, your specific findings and how to tailor.
The meetings will move along a little bit faster, too. We'll move the meetings a little bit faster that way, too.
Great, okay. Well, I'll work with Leslie on figuring out.
In case we start drifting away, get a whistle.
I have the point of order. Point of order is kind of a big hammer. I don't like the point of order.
I hear the May meeting is very crowded, but perhaps we could do that at the June meeting, have a study session on that.
Chair, you'll be happy to know, we did discuss this at the last meeting and it was added to the list of study sessions you all wish to have. So the June meeting sounds like it might work.
It's gonna be quite a night. All right.
All right, so we have a study session on mobile food vendors.
Yes.
Praying that it's not too lengthy.
It is not. It is a very short.
I know there's a lot of concern over it, both publicly and, and from the city's side of things.
Okay, so more on the zoning ordinance. So per your request, I am bringing to you this evening our section of the updated zoning code on mobile food vendors. So with our adopted zoning code in January of 2024, we included provisions for mobile food vendors. These provisions became effective with the zoning map that was adopted in August of 2024. So when those zoning designations were actually applied to properties, that's when this section of the code actually became effective to those properties. And this would be for, for mobile food vendors on private property, so not in the public right-of-way. So mobile food vendors can operate on commercial, mixed-use, office and industrial zoning districts. And prior to the updated zoning code, we did not have regulations for mobile food vendors specifically on private properties. So they would have had to occur through a special use permit or a conditional use permit, what we used to call our bingo lodge provision. So the purpose and intent of the mobile food vending is so that the use is compatible with the associated and surrounding uses and do not obstruct pedestrian vehicular circulation or create an unsightly appearance. And to include development standards. So these are development standards that are straight from the ordinance. I've summarized them here for you, but location, so the applicant needs to submit a fixed, specifically approved location. Hours of operation, if you're within 100 feet of residential use, you're limited to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Signs, no signs are allowed above what is allowed for the onsite business. So if the onsite business is using all the maximum signage that is allowed for that site, the, the food truck could not also put another sign out. So if the onsite business has some allowed signage space still left, the food truck could then use that signage as, as well.
Does the truck itself consider itself signage?
It, it has signage on it, but yes, it's not considered part of the, the sign area. But yes, the trucks generally have sign, yes, signed. They are their own sign, right? Yeah. But occasionally, you know, food trucks might want to put out like an A-frame sign or, or something, if they're, depending on where they're located, it's possible. So distance from residential uses, they can be no less than 100 feet from the property line of a residentially-zoned parcel without prior approval of a minor use permit. So it is possible to locate closer than 100 feet, but you do need to get approval of a minor use permit first. Maintenance is required, so the area needs to be kept free of garbage and other debris. So this allows us to take code enforcement action on those food trucks that aren't abiding by the maintenance requirements. And then we have operational standards. So they must have their county public health clearances, trash cans need to be provided, seating areas are limited to 500 square feet of area and 24 seats. They may not obstruct the public right-of-way, fire and pedestrian access or wheelchair access. No amplified sound is allowed, no additional parking is required, and temporary canopies are allowed but must be removed nightly. So there are permitting requirements, except if you're operating for less than two hours, you do not require a permit. So if you're a food truck that pulls up to a business and you're there for an hour and serve your breakfast burritos and then leave, you do not require a permit. If you're operating for more than two hours, you require a zoning clearance. This is an administrative permit, so it's handled over the counter. And then if you're operating for more than four hours on a site and, or you're within 100 feet of a residentially-zoned property, you require a minor use permit. This is sort of administrative. We do notice the adjacent properties, and if the adjacent, one of the adjacent properties wishes to have a public hearing, then we will hold a public hearing for the use permit. So applying for the permit, just did some screenshots of our website. You can go to our website, click on the Apply for a Planning Permit button, you can schedule an appointment. We provide the steps to apply for the planning permit or zoning clearance. We have an application checklist specifically for mobile food vendors, so it gives them all the requirements that they need to provide, the site plan showing their exact location, all the regulations specifically, or all there on our website for the mobile, mobile food vendors. So hopefully making it very easy for everyone to understand the new regulations. And then also, we did some specific outreach for all the properties along El Camino in November. We provided educational materials to all the mobile food vendors that were existing on El Camino. There were about 20 of them. We were, provided the materials directly to the trucks that were parked there, and then we mailed that material to the property owners for where the trucks were parked. And we made it really simple for them by providing QR codes so they could go straight to our website. This did result in two of the trucks getting permits to operate there, so longer than two hour, for longer than two hours. But we did do a significant amount of outreach. And then with that, any questions?
Yes. It's gonna be a few questions here. When did this take place to get this approved? Did it go in front of the city council or something, or?
Correct, it was part of the updated zoning code. So this section was added with the adoption of the updated zoning code.
Okay, now, how much is a permit for a food, food truck?
So if you just require the zoning clearance, so that's the administrative over-the-counter one, it is $590. If you require a minor use permit, it's $6,288.
That's for the, the entire year or for?
It is for forever.
Annually?
Forever.
Forever?
Yeah.
Okay.
One-time permit, correct.
Now, I, the way that I see this, if I was one of the restaurants, restaurant business is one of the hardest businesses to make, to make a go out of it. The failure rate's immense. Now, you have up and down the El Camino, numerous restaurants, and right across the street, you have food vendors that they don't have to pay overhead, they don't have to pay work points comp, they don't have to pay insurance for their employees, medical insurance for their employees, and they don't have to be ADA compliant in all reality, and they don't have to worry about a lease. So why in the heck are we approving this and putting the businessman that is actually coming to our city and building, trying to build a business there, we're gonna let a guy come in with a food truck, park a food truck across the street, and let him operate and take businesses away from him? That is not fair. If you want to have food trucks, I think the city missed out on this, they should have in an, in an area that it doesn't affect any restaurants. It's no restaurants at all, or if not have something like 100 feet that you cannot have a, a food truck anywhere where it's a restaurant. Because you just go down, up and down the El Camino, there's restaurants right there, and you feel sorry for the guys that have the restaurants, while the same, next door, there's a guy with a little truck selling the same thing that he's trying to sell. This is not fair. And I, you know, I think the city council should see this again, or, you know, this is, we're not being business-friendly really to, to the people. I really want to put roots in this city with this. I just, I just can't believe it. When I see that, I just, it hurts. It hurts to see, go through that. So it, it makes me sick.
Have we ever seen this before? We have not, we have not seen it before, right?
It was part of the zoning code update and you.
But it wasn't mentioned, I don't remember hearing.
No, this came because we asked, I asked, that, you know, we have an actual understanding of how we are seeing so many pop-up.
Right.
Food trucks. So I asked, thank you, Stan, and it's very educational, so obviously you have some high emotions and emotions here, but I just, I, I recognize it was part of the large sweep of zoning ordinance updates, including many of our known and unknown sections, and this was section added.
And I can add too, which I did leave out of the presentation, if you're a food truck in the public right-of-way, those permits are issued by the police department and are under different regulations.
That was my, going to be my question. I was going to be interested about the Scott and the, I mean, it is hard to drive by, and yet we have, you know, cones placed, and I've seen more, more operationalizing. And I agree with, you know, the Commissioner Boozer that, you know, there is a recognition of how much we are hurting those who have and made due faith effort in hard spaces and hard construction efforts, renovation, licensing and everything else that goes with maintaining a full-on business as a hotel or a restaurant. And here is a competition, and it's another model, but it is a competition, and, you know, there is a recognition of how simple or how tough it can be for those. You know, it's, it's got both, like, you can allow the, the service worker to have a second career almost in this area, so there's that angle. And then there is those who have vested interests or have invested resources within the city. But I, I am more curious of the right-of-way, you know, and the implication it has on our traffic and how we have almost permeated that as a given, and that is something I will take a little more stride and stance on.
Yeah, I mean, if you do it right, you can have zones that they come to. Like, I've seen this in Austin, Texas.
Right.
Exactly, like a farmer's market.
Provened areas, sure.
And you can do, use it as a draw.
Yeah.
To bring in those people for maybe other things. But I agree that you don't want to kill the people that have already put a lot of effort and stuff into creating a business. It's very hard. But, so I'm curious, when you say two hours of operation, right? Like, I've seen a particular food truck that's there all the time. Now, I don't know that it's operating, what the hours it's operating at, but it's almost like a semi-permanent structure there. So if somebody says, hey, I'm only open for two hours, yet the truck stays there day in, day out, is there any kind of saying, hey, wait a minute? No, no, you actually have to move because you can't stay there for that long period of time?
Is it on private property?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, they could.
On commercial property.
Yeah, I mean, so under the new code, they, I'm assuming they have a permit, I don't know.
Yeah.
I could look it up if you have an address, but.
I'm not a snitch.
They would, they would need a permit, but yes, they, they can stay parked there.
Okay, because they also have, like, chairs and other things, like, it's all of a sudden they started, they started, like, almost building out.
Right, but that, again, the provisions require if they have canopies, it needs to be brought in every night, the, the chairs are limited to the, the 500 square feet.
Yeah.
So there are regulations.
And when you say.
How much space they can take.
Okay, and when you say addition, they can't take additional parking?
No additional parking's required, sorry. They don't require parking.
They, they don't, well, somebody's gonna come up and drive up, right? So that's gotta.
Right, they use the parking of the business that's there.
Right, so.
Share parking.
If it so happens to be that they're right by a residential area and they, people start parking on the residential area, there's no way to really enforce that.
If they're parking in the street, no, not in the public street.
Right.
Yeah, no.
Right, okay.
Okay, so before I hand off to Nancy, I have one of my own couple of questions. Are they subject to health and safety inspections?
Yes.
Okay, good. So that, that part's good.
And that's one of the application requirements.
What about?
They have to provide their.
Pedestrian safety and hygiene in the form of trash and other things?
Correct, yes. So that was one of the requirements that I had up there. They require trash cans, there is maintenance requirement. So if their site is, has trash and debris and is not cleaned, that is a code enforcement issue that we could enforce upon. We could cite them for that because it is a code requirement.
Has there been any study or report back of incidents? Have they increased the number of police calls or other kinds of safety calls by being located on this property?
Since this ordinance was adopted, no. But again, we've only issued a few permits specific to this ordinance thus far.
And a no permit for two hours implies that they can operate for two hours and then move across the property line and operate another two hours?
Yeah.
If they need authorization from each of those property owners.
Yeah.
We're not talking about parked on the public right-of-way, we're talking about.
Yeah.
They're, they're parked in somebody's parking lot, taking up no more than four parking spaces, and then they're moving to somebody else's parking lot. I, I guess if they know lots of business owners with parking lots, yeah, they could do that. They could hop every two hours.
How do you stop them from saying, I'm closing down for five minutes and then reopening for another two hours? What's in the regulations?
Because if you haven't moved.
What constitutes two hours?
Okay, I move five inches.
What constitutes two hours?
Yeah, what constitutes, two hours within, I'm assuming it's within a certain period of time. of time.
I prosecute them for that. That's ridiculous.
Reasonable.
I mean, it's gotta be within the aggregate, but let me see how it's actually defined.
It's an abuse of the rule, obviously. We're closing for lunch for one hour, and suddenly they can open for two more. So two...
Exactly. Yeah, I have that hacker mentality, how to get around the system.
Oh, I know.
Oh, yeah.
Stump the lawyers.
You'd be a good businessman, Eric.
You don't say, like, specifically.
Yeah.
That's right.
You know, you can get back to it later on. I don't want to...
It's implied.
It really is an interesting...
Okay. Now, the language is, when operating for less than two hours, no permit is required. When operating for more than two hours but less than four hours, a zoning clearance is required. When operating for more than four hours or within 100 feet of residency zone parcel, a minor use permit is required. So, yeah, if somebody operated for one hour and 55 minutes and then closed and then started again, I would say, okay, the clock continues once you reopen. I would have no problem prosecuting them for that. That's, no judge is going to say, oh, well, they stopped for five minutes. That's ridiculous. I'm not worried about that, Kate.
It would be a nice try.
Let me ask a related question from a sanitary standpoint. Are porta-potties allowed, or what is the interest to protect the people to avail a sink, a restroom? Is that something that is needed, required, adjacent, at loss, figure it out, your risk?
Yeah. Not required.
So you don't have any hand washing?
Just trash cans, no.
Are you serious?
No, that's why I was asking about the public hygiene and hygiene in general.
Do you need a permit for the sink inside the truck?
I don't want to go there, right? I know what you're saying, and I don't want to go there.
It's so...
This is a very disquieting revelation.
I have some questions.
Yeah, we're not going to generate any change here. We're just trying to learn about it.
Actually, the merchants are the ones that are gonna generate the changes if they get sick and tired of coming from the city council, like, you know, out of the restaurants. Those kind of people are probably making the changes. It comes true.
All right.
Well, one of my questions will get answered if you put that PowerPoint back up that said the places where you could do it. I know commercial was one of them. So I'm thinking of two places now, and I'm trying to wrap my head around this. It's gotta be more than 100 feet away from residential, and I'm not gonna cite names, I'm not trying to throw somebody over under the bus, but up here on Warburton and Scott, okay? You know, you've got gas station, you've got 7-Eleven, and then you've got residences on the west side. That's not, from what I'm hearing, then, that's not legal if they're parked on the curb?
If they're in the street?
Yes.
Yes, that's legal. That's a separate, that's public right-of-way, that's a separate...
This ordinance is not about trucks that park on the street. We're just talking about mobile vendors that drive into somebody's parking lot, get permission...
But 100 feet?
It doesn't apply to the public right-of-way. This only applies on private property.
Which is even worse.
So then that answers my other question about down the street on El Camino and Scott, where they're parked across the street from those condos that went on fire.
We can only regulate private property.
Interesting. And it accounts, oh, there it is, commercial mixed-use office, okay.
Nancy?
Yes?
They're parked halfway on the street and halfway on the sidewalk.
It's still right-of-way.
But they're blocking the sidewalk, then.
Doesn't matter.
Half on the street, half on the... You should be able to cite those.
So call code enforcement.
Yeah.
Code who?
It's actually the police department.
Police department, okay.
Or vehicles, yes.
Mixed-use office.
Yes. Vehicles can't be parked on the sidewalk.
All right. Well, now you've raised the hackles of many people. Go ahead.
No, that was the people that are driving from site to site.
So, just a fact question, trying to understand. Looks like the question originally originated with Commissioner Cherakur here, asking that there are lots of, you know, food trucks in Santa Clara streets. So do we have information? I'm trying to understand if it's a data center problem, right? Meaning, meaning, Sunnyvale doesn't have that many. San Jose, we have a lot of food trucks here. Is that the case? Is that factual? So in other words, are we inviting by our loose laws, are we inviting a lot of food trucks? That's my question.
I don't know the statistics for their cities. I can say we contacted 20 specifically on El Camino with materials. Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah. We did not go into Sunnyvale to see how many food trucks they had.
I understand. But you see where I'm going, right? I mean, if indeed our laws are, for, you know, lack of a better term, I don't have a better term, for lack of those better terms, we have loose laws, and then people are taking advantage. And that's what I think Commissioner Boosa and others are concerned about, that then we are getting a pile of, and then all the downfall effects of that, right? The snowball effects of that. So, okay, that's a question in my mind. If we don't have an answer, we don't have an answer.
I know they're allowed in San Jose in the same manner with a permit on private property in the same manner.
They're not allowed on right-of-ways.
On right-of-ways. But on private property, they are. But I think there's special permits.
So that may be something to consider, and if we do think that we have something specific here, then maybe we think about, you know, tightening laws or making it a little bit more difficult, price elasticity to demand, maybe, right? Start charging more for the permits and things like that, yeah? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we've not gotten any specific code enforcement complaints for mobile food vendors on private property.
I could see the enforcement of the two-hour rule is gonna be almost impossible because the minute law or code enforcement arrives, they go, no, I've only been here an hour and a half, no matter how long they've been there.
He said, she said.
We...
Take a picture with your iPhone.
I mean, that's not the sort of thing you could repeat day in, day out, though. I mean...
I'm just surprised if there's not a permit even for the two-hour, because that seems like a, it could be a minimal amount, but an amount that they pay to acknowledge the rules. Right now, if you have no permit for two hours, then there's no reason for them to acknowledge they've ever even read the rules.
To make a point, I've been in businesses that were located in strong business areas, and there were no eating places out there.
Yeah.
So these food trucks are then serving that purpose, going from one business to the other.
Didn't say they're a bad thing.
Right. So I think that part of the ordinance allows for that function, that you can go easily from one business for two hours and then go serve somebody else, right?
That's perfectly reasonable. It's just, there's no acknowledgement that they understand the limits because we're not putting any requirements on them to commit to them. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, I'm not sure they could make enough money, and by the time you set up and tear down, if you're in that two-hour window period, I'm not sure they'd make enough money. Do we have a lot of people that are just doing, that you know of, that are just doing the two hours, I don't have to get a permit?
Well, it's how you think of it. You could have cut fruits.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
You know, you could have any number of options for...
Yeah, you're right. The people are in the corner.
You know, little tacos and little assembly, like by San Francisco Pier 39, you have all those...
You go to Costco and you can buy all kinds of fruit, yeah.
Not only that, you're paying, in a business, you're paying four, five, six, $10,000 a month in rent. Not only that, workman's comp's very expensive, too, and insurance. Now, you go to one of these food trucks, and if you get sick from eating their stuff, who are you gonna sue? I'm pretty sure they don't carry the insurance to cover that.
Yeah, you show me where you can get rent for $10,000, and boy, I'll open up a restaurant.
There you go.
I'll get you one.
The city of Santa Clara was charging a Fiorello's $30,000 a month.
Well, the city of Santa Clara, but that's a big space. You can get a smaller space. And the old Murbers Plaza, yeah, with the old Portuguese bakery.
Opening up a taco place.
Yeah, no, there's, over there, there's a couple places.
Okay.
Okay, moving along.
Let us try and be at home tonight. So, is there more that we want? I don't think there's anything more we can do about this, so it's just, thank you for the presentation. That's very enlightening and disquieting. That was excellently executed.
I think we have registered your disquiet.
Yes, we have general disquiet.
Consensus on the disquiet.
Yeah, emphasis on disquiet.
Apologies, I can't hear.
Awesome. So, there's nothing to note and file, so we'll just move on to item seven, and this is gonna be one that's gonna be contentious, but hopefully we can keep our comments on target. Study session, I'm sorry, study session, planning commission work plan fiscal year 25/6.
Okay, so just a reminder, yearly work plan, we had a conversation a few meetings ago. By our May meeting, we need to review and approve your work plan so that we are ready for the presentation at the dinner in June or July. We do not know the date for that yet. And then start implementing in August.
He's tired.
So this is the list from last time. We have three sections to your work plan. We have conferences and trainings, we have study sessions, and then we have your land use priorities for council consideration. Your standard conferences and trainings, joint venture Silicon Valley, the Planning Commissioner Academy, the APA National Conference, APA California Conference, the Institute for Local Government, nothing upcoming, State of the City, and SEQA. And then study sessions, this is in my way. Your yearly housing legislation, the ULI study session, I just did your mobile food vendor ordinance for this year, SEQA. So actually, at the May meeting, you're gonna have a SEQA study session presented by David J. Powers and Associates. We'll be having a data center study session on May 20th. Yay! Yay!
And we're gonna have a replay of Xander's...
Free, yes. Yes, the SEQA training is free.
Free.
Yeah.
Question, the housing element part, there was, I thought there was some commitment or understanding that we would come back a year or two later and see how we are doing against the commits? Is that not, did I misunderstand the housing element update, or is that something you're also gonna put on the list and do at some point in time?
Yeah, we can add that.
Yeah, in other words, we don't want to wait until eight years and then find out where, you know, we missed this or...
Oh, correct. I do, we do have the yearly annual progress report, so I do have some numbers for you this evening that I will do on city council actions. But yes, we can add it on here, too.
Thank you.
And then I added, as requested last time, the due process requirements, that we'll put, the assistant city attorney will give a presentation to you, but that did stem from a question on how to respond to reporters. But we'll just add to that.
A multi-partite presentation.
Yes, 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 yes.
It'll be three hours of legalese.
Will you live through it?
It'll be three hours of anything.
So, yeah, if you have more thoughts and ideas for things moving for the future that we can add to this list, that would be great to add as we move into the new year, the new fiscal year. And then, oops, where did I go here?
So, one thing that I noticed in just a quick glance through that is that it would be nice, I'll open it to the rest of the commission to chime in, it'd be nice if we had two sessions with city council a year instead of one.
Yeah, they don't like us that much.
You did put that request in last year.
Yeah, but I agree, once a year is not...
You did put that request in last year.
Yeah, we noticed what happened.
See, how quickly they forgot.
Keep requesting it while we're still alive and available. And...
Why are you guys all talking about that you're not gonna be around?
I am here, guys. You guys pick your dates.
I plan on being around.
I'm here, 28, and then I'll be in the audience.
Anyway, so, okay, now, I think, yeah, persistence pays off because after a while, maybe they just get tired of it.
I'm tired of it.
The other, the other thing that I saw was missing, that would be helpful, is we do sort of updates of what happened to the city council, et cetera.
Yeah.
It would be helpful if we could get updates of the things that we, substantial projects that we've been involved in approving or disapproving as they progress, like annually, just to get an idea, what's happening? Did that five-year project start? Did it end? Did it get canceled? Because once we've been through the process, I lost track. I have to drive by the site over and over again to see if anything's...
We have no kind of goals for it, which I know that Councilman Park didn't think that was of value, because it doesn't like KPIs, I probably used the wrong terminology. But I think it does help, you know, some way to look at, okay, this is what we thought was gonna happen, what actually happened.
Yeah. Not trying to add a lot of work to staff, but just a snapshot of what's going on.
How can we improve what we're doing?
Yeah. Just take a look at what we've done through the year and what may have to be, yeah. It takes a long time for things to happen, so, yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, so each of the departments, right, the building department or the planning department would have, would know exactly at any given point in time what project is at what stage, right? They could write a one sentence saying Kylie is half-built. Okay, right?
Yes. Yeah, I could tell you, yeah, I could tell you whether or not they've submitted building permits, yeah. I could absolutely do that, yes.
And we submit them anyway for arena counts.
Yes.
Actually, you know, I'll give you one example of something that I wish there, something we could do. I'm not asking you to do anything in particular, but here's what happened. Where I live, there, a building went up. It's four stories, and it's literally, it comes right up to residents. And when it was proposed and people were able to go and say, okay, this is what you're proposing, they were gonna put, I gotta be careful how I say this, some of the people that went to that meeting said, we were told that the windows were gonna be opaque, that are looking down literally in our backyards and into our things. And then, when it was built, that's not happening. And all of a sudden, when they look at it, it's like, they can see right down. So now, the builders are trying to do something to help the residents by putting, paying for bushes and stuff, that's great. But it's kind of like a contract. You know, one of the first things I learned about contract law was studying IBM's contract, and they said, okay, so everything that we told you before about this product that we're gonna sell you, any pamphlet stuff, has nothing to do with this contract, so forget anything we said. This is what's in here, and it's only in the contract. So if it's not in the contract, we don't care. And of course, a lot of people didn't read the contract. So I don't know necessarily how to do this, but I would love to know that, hey, when somebody makes a public presentation, people attend, and they say, here are the models of what we got, and this is what we're proposing. When it changes, when it actually gets passed and it changes, it almost to me is like, the residents should be aware of that, because I think that would, you know, mistakes happen, I get things that change, but still residents say, hey, you know, this is what we saw, and then this is not what we got.
So unless it's written in as a specific condition of approval, that's what really needs to happen. If it's important, and, yeah, it should be a specific condition of approval.
It should be a specific condition of approval, and also...
Especially for things like that.
But I think there's some latitude in the law, and Xander, I'm the one that's always professing that I know all this stuff, and you know it better than I do. If you say, hey, this is what's going to happen, but then city council proves it differently, as a resident, if all I ever saw was the one thing, do they have any kind of recourse? Unless they go to city council and say, hey, that's not what we saw, right?
I mean, there are multiple bites at the apple here. I mean, we usually have the development review hearing after you and the city council act, so that's, that's when the plans get more refined, so hopefully they would also get notice of that and attend the DRH to have an additional input. You know, privacy windows, we have, we have put that as an express condition for some projects. So if it's a condition of approval, then it would be a code enforcement matter, like she said. But just.
In this case, it was not.
Just conceptual drawings they show at council, and then the final plans are a little different. I don't see, I don't see a remedy for them unless, unless they go to DRH and it's something at DRH that, you know.
And typically, for privacy, we do put them as specific conditions of approval.
Maybe what we could do is a study session, a nice, easy study session, would be to have something that says, given that we're going to be building very large buildings in areas that potentially are residential and one or two stories, maybe we should say, hey, what are the things that we should be thinking about to protect the privacy?
That's those are objective design standards. Unless they're part of that, you can't ask them separately anymore.
Yes, which we do have some of that in there that deals with privacy concerns based on our experience with these exact issues.
So that's objective design standards, and you won't be seeing that again. But to your, to challenge even, the condition of approval when the house was built and the neighbor complained is only as relevant as the next replacement of the window. Nobody's going back and validating, because replacement windows don't go and validate.
Well, if I'm right there and I can see that they didn't put the same kind of window in, trust me.
Yeah, but the neighbor does, can change, and so can the actual.
No, I understand.
So I'm saying it's very hard to do code enforcement on things that are that nuanced.
Unless there's a condition of approval.
Yes. Well, even then, if you'd said opaque windows, do window replacement trigger a review of the condition of approval?
It would specifically in this instance, because you're talking about a multifamily building that required a planning permit, so that permit is tied to that property. So when you come in to change it, if you have to go through a permit process, which comes back to us for review, so we'll look at it, and we'll look at those permit conditions and go, oh, no. Now, if they did it without getting a permit, which happens all the time, it would rely on a neighbor to go, oh, no, 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 and put in a code enforcement complaint, and then we would go back and look at that condition and then have to say, no, I'm so sorry.
You're talking multi, I'm talking single family.
Oh, single family, no, single family.
That's what I'm trying to say.
No, 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 yes, cannot do that.
You can't.
Not for a single family, no.
You can do for a PD.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a single family.
Oh, okay, okay. From a privacy window where we say, plant X number of trees and Y number of, you know, have an opaque window, and I, that person should not be seeing my bedroom window, and we've enforced it. Right now, that will come out of the design objective.
Can either of you state the concern in a form of a work plan item?
No, I was going to bring back to this. This is not, anyway.
I'm eager to hear that. I would like to actually understand how we, as a commission, can help the residents get, you know, some sort of closure on things that are changing out from under them. I don't know if that's even in our, again, not in our purview, but it's something that would help to have some confidence from the residents if we were involved in it.
So you're saying that if it's a multi-development apartment building, that's already a part of the specific plan?
We have conditions.
And if it's already been approved, I can't go back and say, hey, you know, lack of privacy, guys screwed up.
I think as citizens, you can finally complain anytime, independent of what was approved or what was not approved, right?
Well.
You can finally complain, but.
Yeah, we can only, we can only hold them to what was actually approved. So if there was no specific condition, or it wasn't in an approved plan set, we don't have anything to hold them.
So the control starts there, is what they're saying.
Or it wasn't an action taken.
That is our first line defense, to make sure that these baseline checkbox items are covered.
So what I was, what I was thinking about was saying, hey, listen, maybe we should have something that says, hey, listen, when you do have a building like, you know, six stories high in a residential area that hasn't had one before, that there are certain things you have to do, period.
And Commissioner Chirukuru had it right in the objective design standards, the privacy concerns, and the location of windows and the sighting of those windows are important when you're adjacent to a single family.
Okay.
We're back to the action.
All right, so is, there's nothing to get, yes. Are we, was any other suggestion on anybody's list for this?
Chair, sorry, but I do need to get this out of my system.
Uh-oh. You go, yes, that's a way.
So, to make Eric's point just a little bit finer, right? So there's, there's a, there's a housing plan proposal in front of the commission, and now there's a public hearing going on, and somebody says, well, this six-story building is looking down in my backyard and the backyard of 15 other of my, you know, neighbors, I want something done. And the rebuttal is, we'll put privacy windows. And it's done and gone. The point was raised, the question was answered, there is no.
It's not.
Condition added, you know.
It has to be recorded, and therefore it has to be in the minutes.
Motion.
In the record, of the video record, and it has to be in the documents. And that's the key, is, you, you're right, we're going to lose that connect, that agreement between the statement and the documents.
So, in the motion.
I mean, there was a PD development where the developer at the meeting committed to putting some sort of balconies on the windows, and then later came back and said, you know what, I, I don't want to put in the balconies. And we pulled the transcript from the meeting, and since that was what he was presenting to the council as part of the PD zoning, now the PD plans are the zoning for the site. So in that case, we could hold him to it. We told him, no, if you want to get rid of the balconies, you can apply to rezone your property.
Right.
Have fun, and surprise, surprise, he put in the balconies. But outside that level of, you know, refined approval, I mean, we're not doing, we're not going to do PDs much in the future. It's more challenging.
Yep. Well, did we at least give any feedback that's useful? We added a couple things.
Yeah, I've got annual updates on projects, I think that's a good one to add.
If you feel the energy to do.
Objective design standards.
If you feel the energy to do it bi, you know, twice a year, that would be great, too, but, you know, at least annually, so that we get a sense of accomplishment.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be great.
So is this the real focus, that you want names and timeline, and whose names should be nominated?
No, we don't.
I nominate people.
No, 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 you don't need to do that. This was just like the, this is just the standard, like, format for these, it doesn't, technically, you guys don't really fit into the box, because you're quasi-dugist.
If you're asking for a subcommittee, basically, that would have been in a normal process, due process, would have been an ad hoc or a task force that is breaking up and looking at those topics and bringing back that recommendation to this commission, and then taking it forward to city council.
Yes.
Okay.
Technically could do if you wanted to make a subcommittee and go off and do research and.
I think I need to speak towards this when we do our dinner.
Correct, exactly.
I hope that there's enough content to have a meaningful presentation to council.
We didn't get it through all the stuff we had last time.
Maybe we can just get through one of them.
Mr. Boozet said something very important. We don't have enough time. We never, ever, ever, in my multiple times of sitting in that dinner, devote enough time to actually accomplishing something.
Do you want to reduce the list?
No.
I think he wants more time.
I know.
I want a shorter road, I want a wider road.
Okay, let's make a deal, we won't go for two joint sessions, but that means you're going to have to increase the one joint session by two hours.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, if the council is so disinterested in our feedback that they can't afford another half hour or an hour out of the day, that's kind of a message to us, but proposed at least, perhaps, that we budget a sufficient amount of time to converse about these topics rather than present and forget. Because, you know, they have note and file, well, this is like note and forget, so let's try to avoid that.
I can put your request forward.
Thank you, oh, yeah.
I mean, we can make sure our presentations are to the point.
Yes.
And more efficient, that's for sure.
We cannot grandstand and divert, it's just got to stay on the, yeah.
Do we end every topic with, and please get back to us on your thoughts?
No, we do it one time at the end.
I like each and every one.
All right. I can't think of anything else, let's, let's move, let's get on to the final stretch here.
Okay.
We're actually up to, if I get to the right page to remind myself, reports of commission board liaison in committee, announcements of other items. You're announcing the staff.
Oh, yeah, so the, the data center study session is, should be on Tuesday, May 20th. I'm not, Elizabeth, have you got confirmation? I still show it.
No.
As, as polling, but.
Correct, correct, they're still polling council, we've already committed, we already have a quorum.
So, still hold Tuesday, May 20th, that's our fairly confident.
How long is it scheduled for, do you know?
I do believe it's an hour.
Hour, it starts at seven, if it starts.
Yeah, correct.
One hour.
Starts at seven, so yeah, we're probably.
I think he wants more time with.
Get moving, come on, I just work here.
If Councilman Park is going to say anything, that's 45 minutes of it, so we have to make sure that we keep our comments concise. An hour feels extraordinarily limited to convey the depth and breadth of this topic.
So, maybe one suggestion, can, be quiet, Boozet. I'm going to come over there, it is getting late. If we go ahead and give him something to read beforehand.
Yes.
Then at least they don't have to hear it from the very, very beginning, and that way we can try and, so like, I have some stuff where I was putting together, you know, different, different cities and counties that had made ordinances with data centers and such, would be interesting to see as a comparison. I don't know if you already made some of that, but I will send it to you.
Sure.
Next week, and then that way, since we're not, we're not, when do we meet next?
May 21st, the day after.
So I'll send it out, and since we can't have a meeting beforehand, I don't know how it works where, we can't have, we can't have a discussion on our own about it, then.
No, without Brown Act, finally.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking.
Ooh, I'm going to correct myself, well.
Don't correct.
I show it tentatively starting at 5:30. Did anybody poll for 5:30? They changed that.
No, I spoke with Nora, and she said seven.
Seven, okay.
I mean, things can change, but.
They said seven.
They have a closed session beforehand.
Eric, San Jose is building a large data center.
It might be an hour and a half.
Microsoft is building a data center, I believe, right by, next to Topgolf.
There's a bunch being built in Arizona.
Yeah, the power plants.
Utah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would appreciate.
The study session might be an hour and a half.
It's going to be next to ours.
Requesting that we.
All right, so I'm going to throw out just some communication of some papers and stuff I have, and then.
Yeah.
It can be handed out to everybody, and you can do whatever you want with it.
And I will be in contact with the chair.
And I will send, or you actually should already have the URL to the article that I was quoted in, right, for the data centers? They might want to read up on that, there's a lot of facts and figures there.
I don't know, do I?
I will make sure you get a copy.
I don't think that I do have that, I don't think so.
Yeah, it's a multi-state, multi-city.
Oh, no, yeah.
Article.
Please send that.
We are featured prominently.
Wonderful.
Yeah. We have this many data centers here, you're the big dog. All right.
Can I quick, mundane question, staff, do we know when the National APA and the State APA conferences are? I need my AICP credentials.
The National is in April.
That's what I saw, and so I wanted to see if there was, and it showed virtual.
The Na, ooh.
Yeah, I will.
You had it in your list there.
Yeah, the National is, the virtual is April 23rd and 25th, and then in-person is March 29th and April 1st.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are you requesting to do that, do the virtual?
Yeah, when is the virtual, yes.
April 23rd and 25th for virtual.
That's like, like what, yesterday?
Next week.
I know, I know.
Well, we could take a vote to expend funds, and I can check it out tomorrow. We, I mean, we do have some staff that are attending virtually.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to get on, on budget, at least, if we can. I'd like to do the virtual, and then again, I have to take time off, too, so just, from attending the session.
Yeah. And then the California conference is in September.
Is in September?
Yeah. September 28th to October 1st.
So, yeah, I might.
In Monterey, correct.
Yeah, I would be.
I would bank then September, because I know only need.
Turns out.
So I will skip the April 1, thank you.
Okay.
You don't need to take a budget action. But please do remind me in September.
Yeah, I'd like to attend September 1.
Yeah. Early bird rate if you register before July 28th.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
Early bird, early bird.
Yes, well, they're not, they're not taking registration right now, but.
I know, but.
Before July 28th.
Before July 28th, tweety, tweety, bud.
Okay.
We could talk about it again in June.
Okay, thank you. There are three commissioners who have currently at least professed interest.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
You can reserve the funds, I assume, if we vote on it?
I do that.
I don't know, the, the virtual.
Well, that, yeah. Yeah, if we can register this fiscal year, that'd be fantastic, so. Who are the three commissioners that are interested?
We have four, okay.
No, I'm not traveling, I'm interested in the remote section.
Are we talking about for April? Yeah.
I've traveled.
No, the upcoming one, there's a lot of them, there's the California APA, and then Nashville. California APA, which I guess I wasn't paying attention, is in Monterey, and that's in September, October, we said.
That one I'm interested in.
I guess everyone's interested in it.
That's what we were talking about. Confused on which one is which day.
How about I look up the information, I think we did look it up previously and give the information to you, that's probably why you know about it. What would be great is to find out when the registration can actually take place, because, not that you're asking me, but your budget update, which is coming up in a minute, I'll just tell you right now, you know, your balance is still at approximately $11,000, and the fiscal year ends on June 30th.
We're good.
So we either take action on May 20th meeting, or we have to by June 11th meeting?
Yeah.
There you go.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, if possible, I'd like to get another keyboard.
I'm sorry, Lance, could you talk in the microphone?
You should just ask. You said it possibly.
Registration opens June 2nd for the California APA conference in Monterey.
That's great.
Perfect timing.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other actions on that? No. Travel training reports, we just covered it, really.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Planning commission budget updates, we just covered it.
Yep.
If there's, unless there's hard data you need to display.
I'm sorry, what?
Budget update, do you need to display anything for?
No, we don't need to.
We already talked about it, okay.
City council actions.
For, for budget, can, can we, can we do, for the APA National Conference, for Commissioner Chirukuru?
I can't go for the Monterey, I'm sorry.
She has a conflict with the Monterey Conference, so she would like to do the virtual APA conference.
So now you're going back to that?
Yes, please.
Because I need my credits.
How did you manage all that? I missed, okay, so now we're going back to that you would, if we can get you registered.
For the April 23rd.
Yes.
APA, so I can get my credits, virtual only.
Yes.
If you can all kindly allow my budget to go now.
I think, I don't recall off the top of my head, but it was probably, I believe, around 300-something for the virtual.
You want a motion on that?
I really.
Yeah, we need, you need a motion.
I'd have to look it up, but that's fine.
We got one, no.
Do you want to take a vote right now?
The virtual's $350.
Yeah.
Okay, motion, motion for Priya to go to the virtual California APA. Cost not to exceed whatever the maximum cost is on it.
Only virtual, promise only virtual, yeah.
Second?
Second.
Okay.[1744.12] Okay.
I'm not mad you have to give me the.
Sorry.
That was the NPCA virtual.
I have to get my credits.
Go ahead and cast your vote. There we go.
Priya was the mover? It was Beagini.
Sorry, no, but you're saying yes, I'm assuming?
Yes.
You get to vote also, it's Priya.
Go for yourself.
Okay, thank you, I'll look into that tomorrow, and I'll be in contact with you, Priya.
Okay. So that does now officially bring us to city council actions, was there anything notable?
Yes, so at the last city council meeting on March 25th, the council approved the Irvine Freedom Circle project, which the commission also recommended approval of, that was for 1,792 new residential apartment units in the Freedom Circle focus area. They also accepted the 2024 general plan annual progress report, first submitted to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and in that report,